As Vice Chair, I'm going to call the the March 17th, 2021 meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission to order. And we will begin with a roll call. Ms. Bazemore, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Krasner.
I'm here.
Ms. Peets.
Here.
Mr. Puntes.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
Ms. Coman.
All right. Then I believe, so we have, we have a critical mass. I have to read the virtual meeting statement here. So I'll just announce that the meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2 and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared.
Can you talk to Papa about it, not me?
All all participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at our website, www.fallschurchva.gov/pc, as well as on Falls Church City Television, which you can see on Cox Channel 11, RCN Channel 2, or Verizon FiOS Channel 35. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of any of the public hearings sections of the meeting. You can submit those by email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. All right, so with that out of the way, the next step is the adoption of the agenda. And the only discussion on this point, which I discussed with Mr. Stotter earlier this afternoon, for the most part, we're going to follow it, I think, or I'd like to follow it as it is laid out. And but I did think that we should, just for logistical purposes, and dispense with the election of officers, so we can sort that out at the beginning and hopefully, well, we'll have all our positions that are required filled on the commission, and we can then proceed with the with the meeting. So I would just make a suggestion, and I'll ask for a motion if someone, and we'll see if we get support for it, to move 8B up up to the beginning, up to the first item, and then everything else we would follow as it's listed. And so that was my, that was my only, only suggestion to what Mr. Stotter had laid out. So is there, is there a motion? Can I get a motion to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move that we amend the agenda to move item 8B to the top of the agenda.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I guess we do need a roll call vote. Ms. Bazemore?
Yes, Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
Mr. Puntes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so with that being approved, we'll, we'll go ahead with the agenda as amended. Again, obviously, there are no speaker series. And I don't believe there are any receipt of petitions, Ms. Bazemore, for items on the agenda?
No.
Okay, just making sure. It's just, I didn't think we had any. All right, so now we'll go to the, again, the housekeeping item to get that out of the way. As, obviously, as the commission knows, and anyone in the public, they don't know, our, our former chairperson of the Planning Commission, Andy Rankin, has stepped down from the commission, as we discussed at the last meeting, and we will miss him dearly, but we certainly understand his reasons for doing that. And his action therefore leaves the chair position vacant. And according to rules of procedure, we need to have a chair. And therefore, I would ask, are there any nominations for a chairperson to serve the remainder of the calendar year, since we operate, I guess, on a, on a calendar year? So for the remainder of 2021, do we have a nomination for a chairperson? Anyone want to make a, want to make a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Stevens. I would like to nominate yourself, Frank Krasner, to be Chair for the remainder of the term.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on this, I'll just say, you know, I did email members earlier in the week. I've been very happy as Vice Chair. You know, I was not necessarily looking to, for, for promotion, but, you know, given the circumstances, you know, I happen to be Vice Chair, and I'm happy to do it. If the group supports that, you know, and I'm happy to try to carry the torch, you know, it's big shoes to fill with Andy and Russ before that, and others who have had that role in the, in the city before Russ, and going back. But I will, if the group has faith in me, I will endeavor to guide the ship through the remainder of the year, and hopefully be able to, to run the meetings well, and get us through some of the important work that we have, looking, staring at, staring at us down, down the calendar. So, so that's, that's all I have to say, I guess. Any other discussion on, on that? Or any other nominations? All right, I'm not hearing any. I guess we need a, a roll call vote, Ms. Bazemore?
Yes, Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
Mr. Puntes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your, your vote of, your vote of confidence, I guess, is a good way to say it. But, and now, of course, now that leaves the Vice Chairman role vacant. So we now must find a Vice Chair to fill that, that spot. So I will ask if there's any nominations for the position of Vice Chair for the remainder of 2021. Well, I will, I'll make a motion. I will nominate Tim Stevens to be Vice Chair for the remainder of 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
We all second it. We all second it.
Good, yeah, multiple seconds. I heard Ms. Peets, I heard Weiss. We have multiple seconds. So any discussion on that nomination? I'll just say that, again, Tim's been serving, I think, as long as I have. I think we were appointed at the same time, same day, maybe. And I think he'll be an excellent, would be an excellent Vice Chair. He certainly knows the city probably better than anybody, and knows this commission well. So I, I think that's a great choice, and I was happy to nominate him. So I think it's great. Any other discussion on that?
This is Rob Puntes. I agree with that all around, and just want to thank both of you for stepping up and agreeing to fill those roles.
Oh, and Tim has his hammer. I'm, Tim's so polite, you know, he's not, I might even notice it. Tim's got his hand up. Tim, go ahead.
It's actually from earlier, but anyway, I'll just say thank you, and there's still lots to learn. So I appreciate the nomination.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have the second. And any other discussion? Not hearing any. We will go to a roll call vote.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Ms. Peets.
Yes.
Mr. Puntes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
Ms. Coman.
Yes.
Okay, great. That, that motion carries, and we have a new Vice Chair. Congratulations, Mr. Stevens, and we'll have a busy year. So it should be, should be fun. Okay, so now we will pick back up with the agenda as printed with item number 6A, which is the, which is listed as an action item, but it's the Public Information Session for the West Broad Street Multimodal Transportation Project. And I believe staff is here to present that to us and to the public.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could suggest sort of an order for this presentation, and then the, the Public Information Session, I can briefly introduce the item, hand it over to Cameron Garris, who prepared, who helped prepare the staff report for this. Then we would turn it over to the project team for their presentation. I believe one public comment has come in. I don't know if there were others, and then it would be question and answer with the Planning Commission. Apologies for the confusion on listing this as an action item in the agenda, but then not providing a proposed promotion. Let me get to that as I, as I introduce the item. So this is before you for, for two reasons. One is procedural, and that is to hold a Public Information Session, which is a requirement of the grant funding source for this project. This is on the West Broad Street Multimodal Project, and I'll let the, the staff report and the project team present the project itself. So first reason it's before you is procedural, to hold the Public Information Session. And then the second is substantive, and that's for you all, the Planning Commission, in your role overseeing urban design, to provide feedback on the project. And I think your feedback, that, that was the spirit for putting this as an action item. When you've done this for, for a recent project, you all prepared written comments that were then transmitted to council. And of course, staff is, is, planning staff is happy to work with you if you want to prepare written comments and transmit them. But that's all I wanted to do in terms of introducing the process for tonight, and I'll turn it over to Cameron Garris for the planning staff report.
Hello, all. All right, I'll dive right in. The staff report begins with a request of that Planning Commission to hold a Public Information Session, provide feedback to staff regarding the 30% engineering plans for the West Broad Multimodal Transportation Project. A recommendation, staff recommends that in the event the project budget becoming tight, or design elements need to be removed, that the project focus on pedestrian crossings, intersection updates, and select gaps in the streetscape. And I'll elaborate more in staff analysis. To give you some background, the project's scope poses enhancement of multimodal improvements along West Broad, create safer, more enjoyable, connective experience for pedestrians, as well as support continuing economic growth and development. It's focusing on five intersections: West, Spring, Oak, Lee, and Virginia Street. At these intersections, the main improvements are reducing travel lanes to 11 feet, narrow the travel lanes, curb extensions where appropriate to be installed, straightening the intersection geometry, creating high-visibility crosswalks, curb ramps upgrade ADA standards, creating three new mid-block crossings, as well as repair and replace sidewalks wherever it's damaged or obstructed. Attachment 3, supporting application graphic, illustrates these proposed improvements, showing the geometries in blue, the mid-block crossings in a kind of orange-red, and the length of the sidewalk is highlighted in red to mark areas potential repairs or widening. This project is funded with a $3 million grant award from the Virginia Smart Scale Program. And as a reminder, this item is under, is within purview of the commission due to Charter Section 17, subsection 7, which describes a wide range of civic infrastructure projects, which require design input from the commission, including reviewing infrastructure for its conformance with city master plan. To go into staff analysis, I'd like to begin by diving briefly into some related adopted design guidance, starting with the West Broad Small Area Plan, which highlights that the overall goal of the plan is to have improved connections, increase transportation options along Route 7, focusing primarily on pedestrian bicycle accessibility, removal of sidewalk obstructions, create safe crossings, recommend that pedestrian crossings be provided 300, 400 feet, citing that mid-block crossings be necessary along especially lengthy blocks, improve intersection geometry to simply shorten the distance pedestrians need to walk to create safer crossings, all these things which the script of work includes of the project. As outlined in the Streetscape Guidelines, New Buildings Law, Broad Street required to have at least 20-foot setbacks from the curb. These 20 feet are broken down into 10 feet of clear pedestrian zone, 4 feet of building zone, and 6 feet amenity zone. So to conclude, from an urban design perspective, staff recommends concentrating grant funding to improve the safety of pedestrians, intersections, mid-block crossings. Staff believes that improvements to these areas would be the most impactful. The 30% plans include expanding approximately 2,400 linear feet of existing sidewalk and require the coronation of about 36 affected businesses. Plans show a sidewalk expansion of 5, from existing 5 to 6 feet to about 7 feet, replacing the concrete sidewalk with brick pavers. This expansion will increase pedestrian accessibility and materials consistent with city policy. However, it will not provide adequate width for street trees or furniture, anything that is in that design. And also, the pedestrian clear space will be narrower and not to the city standard, which is 10 feet. That's all I got, and I can turn it over to the project team.
I'm just going to say a quick hello. I'm Sue Long from the City of Falls Church. I'm going to hand it over to Chris Daly from VHB, who did the bulk of the work on the 30% plans and the presentation for tonight. Just wanted to point out quickly, and I apologize, Cameron, that we've had a couple of changes in scope that arose from cost constraints and pushback from a safety perspective. And one of the ones that just jumped out to me was that there's only one mid-block crossing now proposed in the plans, and not three. And that is on our largest stretch of West Broad Street, where there is no crossing now, so right around where the ends of Virginia Building is. But Chris, if you're here and you're ready to do the presentation, it probably makes the most sense to go through it and then take questions.
Absolutely. Is the PowerPoint ready, Emily?
Yes.
As she's pulling it up, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project this evening. My name is Chris Daly. I am with VHB. I'm a professional engineer, civil engineer by training and trade, a urban planning designer by nature. And this is a very exciting project to be a part of. I've spent most of my career right down the road in Tyson's Corner, in the building next to the Greensboro Metro Station. We're located there now. We were, prior to that, at the 1237 interchange, currently sitting in Richmond, Virginia. But I know Falls Church very well, grew up in the area, and worked most of my career there. We are talking about the Smart Scale Funded Multimodal Improvements Project, which, if you go to the next, next, right, next. Quick outline of what we plan to achieve with this. A lot of it was covered already, and then Sue alluded to a couple of the changes from what Cameron shared, and I'll get into that. But we'll talk a little bit about how that evolved with the first step, talk about what those actual improvements will be, and how they differ slightly from what Cameron just told you about. And then finally, some update on the progress of the project itself. And, and then we'll talk openly and have the discussion. Next. All right, keep going. All right, so the limits of the project, as already stated, are Broad Street from approximately the West Street intersection to approximately the Virginia Avenue intersection, comprehensive of those intersections, albeit with some caveat, which I'll explain as, as we walk along. But essentially, there's a lot of development already occurring at West, West Street, as you know, in the Northeast quadrant. There's the huge development that is coming along quite nicely. And the focus there was primarily on the crossings across the South and the East. And then at Virginia, through a value engineering process, we scaled back the improvements at that intersection to focus primarily on the ramps, and less so on other improvements that were originally proposed. Next. All right, so the project history began back prior to my involvement. There was a study by the city that determined that there was a need for pedestrian improvements. We, these were alluded to earlier by Cameron. This study indicated, you know, correctly identified Broad Street, I don't have to tell you this, as, as a very important corridor to the city, to all of Northern Virginia, but especially to the city, very active, quite a bit of development over the years, changing from, you know, what it was in the 80s to the high-density, more transit-oriented development along the corridor. And with that, in order to make that type of development successful, we need to ensure that we have the appropriate space allocated to our pedestrians, our cyclists, and our transit users. And that's what was identified back in the fall of 2016. And from that process, a grant application was submitted through the V.Smart Scale Program. If you're not familiar, that's one of the primary mechanisms for the state to fund transportation projects in locality such as Falls Church. It was approved in the second round of Smart Scale. And the numbers you see on the right in the middle there, those are the allocations that came with that Smart Scale funding. PE, meaning Preliminary Engineering, that's the phase that we are on right now. It was given $550,000 for that process. Just to be clear, that is not money coming to VHB. That's money for the project. That includes money for Falls Church. To administer the project, it also includes administration and oversight fees for VDOT, as well as any other engineering and right-of-way acquisition services that the city may acquire through various consultants. $500,000 for right-of-way. Cameron had mentioned how many properties that may be impacted by this project. That was predetermined during the grant application phase. Of course, that's being tweaked as we proceed with the design, but that $500,000 will go toward that process. And then finally, for the actual construction, 1.95 million. So earlier you heard 3 million. The 1.95 million is the actual construction cost of the project. You see those dates there, too. Those are outdated dates. The 2019 was when this project was originally scheduled to initiate preliminary engineering. VHB wasn't brought into this process until early 2020. So the project is a little bit behind this schedule, although we are doing our best to help the city catch up. You can see that it's proposed for right-of-way acquisition in this year, and then construction next year. We are working with VDOT on that updated schedule. In fact, we just had a meeting yesterday, what's called the Scoping Phase Closeout Meeting with VDOT. And I think Sue will concur, we are on good standing with VDOT in, in moving this project forward. And we don't see any significant hurdles in moving this forward. I did also want to point out, of course, the Streetscape Design Standards, that I'm sure this group is fully aware of, that was adopted in 2017. And what that did, that helped set the vision for what Broad Street could be and should be and will be. And this project is being designed very much with that in mind, and following the guidance that is in that design standards. So back to where we are today, as I mentioned, we were brought aboard in early 2020. That started with the survey in spring of 2020, and then jumped right into the preliminary engineering design process with a concept development, which we shared with the city, had several good back-and-forth meetings with Paul, with Planning Group, with Zach, with Ally, among many others, with DPW, getting a lot of smart people involved in reviewing the concept and helping to push this design forward. Next. Oh, I'm sorry, can you see the bottom of that? It looks like it's kind of cut off on my screen. But that is just the bottom there. It shows on my screen. It's just how the funding is allocated over the years. So the, the years up in the box in the right are the start years, the initial start years, as, as they were determined during the grant funding, which I mentioned has changed. But I just wanted to point out that this funding is allocated over several years by VDOT. So that's what the bottom row is, is showing, that the construction was originally planned for completion, and more of the construction in 2023 than in 2022. Next. So I started getting at the heart of why this project be submitted for funding, and then why VDOT saw the benefits and agreed to fund this project for $3 million. Broad Street is recognized as, as an active corridor in the city, and there is a desire among not only the city, but also VDOT at large, in funding projects that promote health, healthy and active corridors, and helping to establish these main streets as a sense of place for the citizens. At the root of the Smart Scale scoring criteria, though, is also safety. Safety is one of the most fundamental scoring criteria for any Smart Scale funding. Congestion reduction is another. As you can imagine, this project did not necessarily score so high on that side of things, but certainly scored well in the other four criteria, including safety, pedestrian mobility connectivity, and, and placemaking and economic development. What was recognized in that earlier study were several aspects of the existing infrastructure. You see here, we use the word impairments, but less than standard, shall we say, infrastructure for pedestrians. Narrow sidewalks, ramps that are not ADA compliant, Americans with Disabilities compliant, crossings that either do not exist or do not comply with current standards, and, and crossings themselves that could be updated with high-visibility crossings. So this is just a smattering of pictures that I happened to take during an early site observation visit. You can see, starting in the bottom left, you can see a crosswalk that leads you directly into a drop inlet, obviously not in good condition for especially visually impaired people. Next to that, you can see antiquated ramps with the, you know, fully exposed aggregate design, which is no longer standard, not to mention the placement of, relative to the utility pole there. Keep going around counterclockwise, the bottom right, you can see where our sidewalk transitions from the wider brick to the older-style concrete that is narrower, with utilities and other amenities that may reduce the walkable pathway. Moving up ahead of that, again, you see some other good examples of various utilities and other amenities that reduce that pedestrian width. The one on the left is very famous Beto's with the utility pole right smack dab in the middle of a narrow sidewalk. Observe many people walking around that in the street. And then finally, up at the top, again, more examples of narrow sidewalk and even narrower pedestrian paths due to utility poles. A great example of our cyclists, which, who feel less comfortable in the street, and instead prefer to use the sidewalk, but they are using a sidewalk that is vastly reduced in width. And as you can imagine, if there's a pedestrian, or even a wheelchair or cyclist traveling in the other direction, that would not be feasible for a passing maneuver. Next. Okay, so I hope that demonstrated the rationale justification for the project. Now moving into where we stand with the actual design process. As I mentioned, the survey began last year in earnest in spring. We are deep in the design process. We've completed our 30% design review with the city and incorporated city design comments. We went back and forth a couple times. Actually, we had a field review meeting with plans in hand with several members of DPW and Paul from Planning. And it was a very productive meeting where we were able to see firsthand why certain design elements were proposed, and how we might tweak them to better accommodate what we were observing in the field. So the 100%, you can see, is planned for this year, 2021. That was one of the items that we discussed yesterday with VDOT, was that project schedule. We want to try to stay in the good graces of VDOT and their dash. was that project schedule. We want to try to stay in the good graces of VDOT and their dashboard. Stay in the green, as they say, or get back to the green so that we don't risk potentially losing this funding and not to raise any alarm bells. I don't think we're in any danger of doing so. So that design completion, Sue, we're in the process of, I know, revising that schedule from VDOT yesterday. I think we're looking at end of October for 100% design plans. The 60% obviously will come before that, and that's what triggers the right of way approval that would then trigger the right of way acquisition phase. So that will happen, it could happen in a somewhat concurrent fashion where we're still progressing toward a 100% design, but we have VDOT's approval to pursue the right of way acquisition. And then following that, of course, construction advertisement and then the construction phase itself. The completion of the construction, as I mentioned, was originally proposed or originally scheduled for 2023 based on that Smart Scale start of 2019. So that actual construction completion will be 2023 or 2024. Next. Okay, now just diving a little bit more into the you go next, the actual improvements. You can see this, if hopefully this animation works. If not, not a big deal, but down below is the 30% design. So I mentioned in the previous slide that we went back and forth with the city to make sure that we had addressed all city comments. At that point, when the city was comfortable, then we submitted to VDOT in December the 30% plan for their review because this is a local assistance project, meaning that the city has full oversight of the project. They're administering and managing the project. It is a city maintained road, of course, but because it is Smart Scale funding, VDOT has some design oversight review capacity. So that that animation is not working, but anyway, we'll move on with the improvements. You can click next. All right. So starting with the updated curb ramps, this was an example I showed on a previous screen. You can see the exposed aggregate antiquated non-standard style that we see throughout the corridor. There are several that have already been updated. For example, the one on the right across the street from the Panera. That's the style ramp with the truncated domes, the two foot truncated domes that you see closest to the crossing and the appropriate ramp grade so as not to exceed the maximum grade for the pedestrians, as well as the four by four landing area at the top of the ramp. There are several examples you can see right there on the left where you don't have the minimum required landing area at the top of a ramp. Next. The pedestrian signals themselves, as I mentioned, there are some intersections with pedestrian phasing on some of the legs. So part of our project is coming through and either adding the pedestrian phases where they don't exist and or upgrading so that the pedestrian signals themselves are located according to ADA, as I mentioned before. The manual on uniform transportation control devices, MUTCD, so that they're brought up to that standard as far as the spacing between, you know, having two separate signal faces for the separate crossings that they're located within the appropriate distance of the crossing themselves and that the push buttons, the detection for the phasing is accessible. Accessible pedestrian signals and the guidance that goes along with installing APS will be adhered to for all of the installations. I show this one to you again, an example of what we propose to do at our access points. This has already been started on the corridor and there's some great examples of of what we'd like to do on the right, which is to bring the vehicular movement up to the pedestrian so that the pedestrian never changes elevation. The pedestrian continues along the sidewalk at the same grade and it's the vehicle that actually changes elevation. And what that does is it has a traffic calming effect. It slows the vehicle as they either enter or exit a driveway, but it also brings their attention to the fact that there is a pedestrian crossing in front of them. Of course, we would have our appropriate truncated domes, our detectable warning surfaces on the other side. But otherwise, this is the more comfortable route for a pedestrian. And of course, in doing so, this is a great example on the left of where we had to really think about how we might modify this particular crossing and possibly relocating that inlet so that we can achieve what's being shown on the right. Curb extensions, or a lot of times you've heard these referred to as bump outs. What they are is an extension of the sidewalk curb line with the intended effect of slowing down vehicles. These are traffic calming devices and the way that they work is it does make it awkward for turning movements. It causes a vehicle to slow before making that movement. It also causes them to be aware that you have a pedestrian crossing. It brings the pedestrian into their line of sight a little bit better. But also it reduces the exposure of the pedestrian to the vehicle. It's a shorter crossing. And that has multiple benefits. As I said, it reduces their exposure, meaning less opportunity to be struck by a vehicle. But also for those phases, or I'm sorry, for those crosses that are under signal control, pedestrian phasing, it reduces the amount of time for the signal cycle that's allocated to that crossing. So it makes your signal timing more efficient as well. Mentioned this quite a bit. It's the widening of the sidewalks. This is just a quick dirty rendering on the right that shows that we are giving more space so that you do have that minimum six foot clear pedestrian pathway that Cameron mentioned are in the standards. It's not a six foot wide sidewalk. It's a six foot wide clear pathway. Sue mentioned that during a previous 30% similar to the city, we had pursued a design objective of widening to at least seven feet and replacing the concrete with brick paver. You can see that in this example, we're showing concrete again. We did have to go through a value engineering process with the city because the the initial cost estimate of widening to seven feet and replacing with brick paver throughout exceeded the Smart Scale budget. So we had to think of ways of how we could still achieve our goals and objectives, but bringing the cost to within the VDOT budget. Next. And last but not least, Cameron mentioned that at some point in time, prior to our involvement, there was discussion of three mid-block crossings. And Sue told you all at the beginning of this presentation that it's actually now one. There is a second one. It's not being done as part of this project. It's being done as a part of a separate project that overlaps with this same project limits. I'm sure you all are familiar with that project as well. There are three pedestrian hybrid beacons that are being installed as part of this separate project, also an LAP, also Smart Scale funded, also happens to be designed by VHB. And that one is at 100% design, not to get too distracted by that one, but I did want to mention that one of those PHBs or Hawks, as they are often sometimes called, is located at Oak Street. So not to be confused, while that is in this project limits, that's being done by a separate project. Now, this one is that you see in this is a, again, a rendering of what that PHB would look like at the proposed location, which as Sue indicated is out in front of the ends. And this was chosen for its proximity to adjacent intersections, or I should say, what at the way Sue said it more eloquently, is that this was the longest stretch where we didn't have a controlled crossing. At this location, we are just outside of that desirable 300 feet for a pedestrian to a controlled crossing. So that would be at the adjacent intersections. So that's how this location was chosen. Also, plenty of site observations showing pedestrians crossing at this location. There are pedestrians that are not necessarily walking along the whole corridor and deciding to cross here, but instead they're generated by some of these land uses on either side that are mid-block. And this is where they feel like it's most convenient for them to cross. So this is why we want to put this crossing here to make that crossing a little bit more safe for them. The next slide will show you what exactly is a pedestrian hybrid beacon. And if you, hopefully this video works.
This video illustrates how the pedestrian hybrid beacon or PHB works to improve the Virginia Department of Transportation's focus on improving pedestrians' safety crossings.
We see it, but we can't hear it.
Okay, Emily, I think there's a setting when you share the PowerPoint that you want that audio. And if not, I don't want to delay any further. I can, I actually prepared this video as part of a project for VDOT where we're preparing several animations for bike and pedestrian mitigation measures and safety treatments. And this is one of those that I was tasked with preparing this information for the public digestion. And the way a PHB works is you can go ahead and play the video if you want.
The PHB is a pedestrian activated device that alerts and controls traffic to assist pedestrians in crossing a road. PHBs are typically found at mid-block crossings and uncontrolled intersections.
PHB pedestrian hybrid beacon.
Prior to activation, the PHB beacon indications remain dark. When a pedestrian activates the beacon, the beacon flashes yellow lights, which signal to drivers to slow down and proceed with caution.
And that alerts the drivers that the signal indication is going to change and that a pedestrian will soon be crossing. Vehicles are allowed to proceed during that flashing. During the all red, that's time for the crossing, just like the standard pedestrian crossing is. At that time, vehicles are mandated to stop whether there's a pedestrian or not. So now you see the wig wag of the flashing red hand during that time, a vehicle may proceed as long as there's no pedestrian in the crosswalk. As you see right here, pedestrians can start up again. This is similar to a full color control signal. However, it's more efficient in that it does allow for vehicles to continue if there is not a pedestrian present. And that's why these are so desirable because they achieve a similar effect of providing that controlled time for a pedestrian cross, but then does not eat up more time and cause more delay for vehicles. You go to the next one? Okay, this is just another summary of exactly how that that works. What a pedestrian see would see versus what the motorists would see. What a pedestrian sees is exactly what they see at any regular pedestrian crossing. What the motor sees, as I mentioned, is the flashing that lets them know that it's the signal display is changing. The steady yellow that we are all accustomed to at a normal full color signal control. The full red, that's time for the pedestrian crossing at three and a half feet per second from curb to curb. Then it goes to that flashing, which opens it up to pedestrians to proceed as long as it's safe, as long as it is clear. Next. Okay, moving on. So next steps. The environmental assessment is underway. This will be a programmatic categorical exclusion. We are putting together that package now and should be sharing that with VDOT for their review very soon. Next will be, you can go ahead and hit next and we'll just walk through these, Emily. Is the right of way acquisition phase. I mentioned this earlier. Once we get the 60% approval from VDOT, that's when that right of way acquisition. And as I mentioned earlier, Cameron mentioned there are several properties that are impacted, even with the minimum widening, we're impacting many properties. Next. This shows 100% design. We will have an interim submittal. That's the right of way submittal that goes along with that right of way acquisition phase. But then the 100% design is where we incorporate all final comments, add all the final details and have a finished product. And then we'll move on to the construction phase. As I mentioned, it's scheduled for two years, starting as early as 2022 and ending as late as 2024. I think that that concludes the presentation. If you hit next. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or open this up for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So Paul, just so I'm clear, I mean, did you say we had public comment on this?
We did. So this is, this has been, this is being used, this forum is being used as the required public information session for the project. That's a requirement of the funding source. One public comment is received, has been received. I think Emily, you've, it looks like you've got to pull it up already. So Emily, I'll let you walk through that. And I don't know if any others have been received. But then I think the next step would be for question and answer with the planning commission.
No others have been received, just this one from Keith Thurston. I can read it verbatim for you guys. Planning Commission and staff, I raise a concern on the 30% plan for the use of the multimodal funds in a way that will delay real street speed progress on West Broad Street. If we are widening sidewalks, then we should do that in accordance with the approved street scape plan for Broad Street. This is a $3 million, this is $3 million for our street scape and it ignores the street scape standards. It only widens the sidewalk seven feet, not the 2015 standard. Two, there will be no trees on one side of Broad Street, but brick sidewalks. This will be the fourth version on the street scape on Broad. A legacy 1980s version with bull nose, 2015 version with no bull nose. Now the 2021 version, no trees. This will be spending good money on a bad solution that will ultimately delay the real full street scape. If we are waiting for redevelopment to do this, there are places that will wait another 50 years because the adjacent property is not likely for redevelopment. Two, again, there are many glitches in the current street scape that could be addressed, such as in front of Beto's where there is no street scape and a barrier and in front of the pizza store at Pennsylvania and Broad where the sidewalk is not completed. And the entrance to these places where pedestrians must walk in the streets to get around a brick wall for several feet. Number three, square crossings on Broad Street is a good thing and adds the pedestrian ease and safety, but the 30% plan is inconsistent at some intersections. We should not leave the odd angles in some of the crosswalks. It makes the city appear disheveled or lower quality. Our goal should be to have all the crosswalks on the side streets parallel to Broad Street and the Broad Street crosswalk perpendicular to Broad Street, even if that means that the curb cut is away from the burb corner. Number four, bump outs are needed in some places where the street is overly wide, but not everywhere. Some bump outs are excessive in size and create safety issues for cars. A good example is at Lee Street and Broad where the throat of the street is so small that the land inbound to Lee Street is restricted in size so that cars turning into Lee Street stop in Broad Street to negotiate a turn. Traps doing deliveries for which there are many frequently stopped blocking Route 7 to await cars to leave so they can enter the narrow street. The 11 foot ideal works fine only when traffic is going straight. It does not allow room for the turning into the side street. Number five, trees should be planted in the areas on the nature strip, even knowing that some will be replaced when street scape arrives. That may be 30 years from now, but the trees will provide balance and improved appearance. Number six, Hawks, the need for one of the Hawks is questionable and that is not a long block. If you look at the path of a pedestrian, they would have had to pass one of the nearby intersections that has crosswalk to get to the Hawk. And finally, seven, overall, the project should do less sidewalk and do it right in compliance with Broad Streets, Street Caves, or it can focus on corners and do them using the brick at the street scape standard size. Clear all of the obstructions and just use concrete, seven foot sidewalk, no brick on the substandard connecting sidewalks. Keith Thurston.
Okay. I mean, actually, he raises a lot of issues. I'm sure some of us probably picked up on some of the same same issues. Actually, that was a pretty comprehensive letter he penned there. Looking at it. In some ways, that's a good conversation starter, perhaps, on some of the issues perhaps that may come up here. So Paul, at this point, I guess it's, it's just, it's just planning commission comment, right?
Yeah, I think one thing we might just want to clarify, I, I think a set of plans was distributed in the planning commission's package. But I think those showed brick sidewalks along the length of the project. But I think what I was hearing from the project team in the presentation tonight is that it's concrete along the length of the project. I'm not sure we have the right plan.
That was another question I had, right? Because the plans that we have show brick all the way through. So that's a somewhat significant change.
Yeah, can I, we had brick originally, we had some pushback from VDOT about installing brick pavers all along there and are continuing to talk with them about it. And also because of cost, I think decided to not do brick in most of the places. And I do apologize. of cost, I think decided to not do brick in most of the places. And I do apologize that what went out was an older set of the 30% plans, which is my bad. And I think is probably confusing a few of these issues here. And I don't know if Chris, do you want to address any of those items that were brought up in that email specifically other than the brick pavers?
Just to clarify, so all of the, everything that's shown as brick in the drawings we have is now going to be concrete?
Yeah, the, the current plan that was submitted to VDOT for 30% review changed to concrete primarily because of the cost. We are retaining the brick paver crosswalks that are in accordance with the design standards. But because of cost, there was a decision made that that was one place that we could save and bring this project back under budget.
Okay, well, I mean, I have some thoughts and comments on that, but perhaps maybe I'll open it up to the commissioners at this point. Let other folks provide their comments and thoughts on this. Does anyone want to? Want to lead off here? Mr. Stevens, quick off the gun there?
I can start off. There's a lot of issues here. This is pretty complicated. I will say, just at a very high level issue initially, the need for a lot of these improvements is, is very apparent. Just the photographs alone that were in the presentation are obstacles that most of us have, you know, dealt with in our long lives here in, in Falls Church. So the prospect of fixing some of these is indeed, you know, very positive. Quick question out of the gate, and Paul, you may know the answer to this, is the status of that VDOT's pinch point there. This is something that I, that we know has been going on for years within the city. And it just seems, you know, if, if that can't be fixed as part of this overall improvement, then we're really leaving a, you know, a big issue on the table, so to speak. Just wondering if you know what the status of that is as far as trying to get additional width there and taking out that brick wall that creates that pinch point.
I know it's something that, that staff and the consultant looked at when we were doing the, the site visit for the project. And I think there were some ideas about maybe how to address that, but I, I don't know that there's been any conclusion on, on how to move forward with that.
Our goal is to reach out to them and try and gain some space there for sidewalk and get an easement from VDOT's. We recognize that may or may not happen. And if it doesn't, then VHB has a sort of workaround solution, which is to move the utility pole that's right in the middle of the sidewalk there to a space where it's out of the way.
Well, that, that would be a big improvement, just that by itself. But, okay, well, that clearly is a big issue. And I'm sure there's an awful lot of people in Falls Church that would be very pleased to see some resolution of that, of that location there. There was reference made to land acquisition. I'm just curious what the thought is as to where land would need to be acquired as part of this project.
And when we say land acquisition, what we really mean is an easement.
Correct. Yeah.
And it's, we, we do have that in the plan. And when we go to this, it's in the 30% plan. It may not be very readily discernible in this 30% plan. During the 60% plan, that's when we would actually provide a right-of-way sheet for each plan sheet that shows the easement, the area, the parcel number, all of the information that would be coming at the 60%. We also have a table currently that lists the amount of easement required for each of the properties along the corridor that was submitted to the city along with our cost estimate.
Well, that, that'll definitely spark some, some interesting discussion when that's clear. You know, like I said, there's an awful lot of issues here and there's, you know, several of us here that I'm sure will want to raise questions. So I'm just going to indicate one last thing. And to the degree that you can respond to some of the issues in Mr. Thurston's letter, I think that would be of interest to, to a lot of us here. Some of them, I think you, you did address as part of the presentation, but there are a few others there that I think we could benefit, you know, having your response to.
Absolutely. We will provide written responses for every comment that we receive.
Very good. Thank you. I'll leave it there for my comments for now, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you, Tim. I see Mr. Quinteros, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, just, just my own clarification. I've read this a couple of times. Like in, in the recommendation from staff is the, a line about, we've referenced it a couple of times in the presentation, if the budget becomes too tight or design elements need to be removed, you know, where we're going to focus. So the implication here being that I guess something is getting thrown overboard. What, can you clarify what, what would not be included? You're going to focus here on pedestrian crossings, intersection updates and gaps in the street scene. It seems like it's the whole thing. I'm just.
Chris, I'll just jump in. At this point, we can afford everything in what Chris just presented. I mean, there's a lot of language in there and there were some elements that have already been, as Chris said, value engineered out of the project. For example, the initial grant wanted us to underground the, all the utilities along there, which would be amazing, but would take the whole budget and then some. It would be the only thing we could do. So I think there's just still language around along those lines. But what Chris presented at the moment, we can pay for.
Thank you. And you mentioned, sorry.
Oh, I was going to say to, to clarify the staff report comment. What would be to something that could be removed if budget was tight, which Sue said in this situation, what's presented is, is not, but would be to keep the intersection improvements and mid-block crossings, geometry, all those core things for intersection improvements. And what would be left out would be the side, some of the sidewalk expansion. Or some of the addressing, there's a lot of driveways that are improved along the way as well as noted in the plan. So those are the two main elements.
Thank you very much for that.
Can I jump in real quick just to address that suggestion? And I, and I like that suggestion. That's, that's good. You know, outside of the box thinking of how we might still be able to achieve our top objectives and stay within budget. I do want to just point out, and this addresses one of the comments that we just read about the, the throwing good money. Just a reminder that this is smart scale money. That money has to be used for this project and for this project as it was scoped. It's not as though we can turn this project down and that $3 million goes to some other project in the city. That's not how it works at all. That's, that money goes away. Also, when we, when we change the scope in any way, that may trigger a reevaluation by VDOT Central Office and the team that oversees the smart scale program and could also result in the funding being revoked. So there's only so much that can be done in modifying the scope. And already, as Sue mentioned, we've already changed the scope in that we're not undergrounding utilities. There was also in the original grant, the installation of some bikes, bike share locations that were already done through a separate project. That was removed from the scope. So those were all taken care of when we had the initial scoping meeting with VDOT and they were okay with that. But as we progress, any change in scope will again trigger more scrutiny as to whether or not this project moves forward.
Got it. Thank you very much for that. Just a couple of quick ones. Sue, you mentioned that the plans we have in our planning commission package is not the current ones. Is there anything else other than the brick pavement that's different from what we have here?
Yeah, there's some, there's some things, Chris.
Sure. Yeah, the, the primary thing was how much we widen the sidewalk throughout. Initially, as I mentioned, we wanted to get a minimum of seven, but through our calculations, we were able to determine that we could stay within budget if we, we only widen to six. And then also, instead of doing brick throughout, the brick, brick pavers, we are just widening the existing concrete sidewalk for the most part. And that, that's the major cost savings. Those brick pavers and the installation of those pavers are quite costly. So that's the primary thing. One other change is in front of VDOT's, in fact. So the 30% plan, when we were first discussing this with the city, there was a decision that we would avoid any property negotiations at that point. But then later, we did determine and receive direction from the city to show what the ideal solution is there, which is removing that wall and widening that sidewalk. That is in the 30% plan that was submitted to VDOT. I understand that that's still an issue that needs to be resolved between the city and the property owner. But we are showing that, that would be a major difference between the two. Another major difference was in the 30%, we were showing brick paver crosswalks at Virginia Avenue. We determined that the existing landscape there, you know, there are already brick paver crosswalks there. So rather than replacing them essentially in kind, the thought was that we could save money there and just provide the curb extensions and new ADA ramps. So that's a major change. Some other slight changes at West to account for coordination with the development project in the Northeast. Other than that, mostly minor things here and there.
Okay, that's very helpful. One more thing, that, there's a bunch of bus stops along this, this route. Pretty sorry, bus stops. Any, any improvement to those anywhere along?
Not in the way of additional amenities, like if you were hoping for a, a structure, for example.
Then just that stuck into the sidewalk.
Right. Unfortunately, again, because of the scope of this project, that was not included in the scope. And I don't mean my scope, I mean the smart scale scope of work, the agreement, the MOU between the city and VDOT. Those amenities were not included. However, what we will be doing is making accessibility to the stops better, ensuring that those stops have, meet all of the minimum requirements as, in terms of the length and width of the landing area, free of obstacles, things of that nature.
If there's, if there is any money left over and there is small improvements to be made, I think that would be a great, a great thing to do. There, there, really, there isn't much of a amenities, other than the sign that's there right now. So but overall, I think this is, this is great. I don't want me, my comments to be super critical. I think the perfect can be the enemy, the good here. This is really, really needed. It's, it's terrible streetscape now anyway. And, and, and I think safety is super paramount. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinteros. He missed, Comott has her hand up.
I do. Hi, all. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And it is exciting to imagine some improvements along this corridor. I guess I had a similar reaction as Mr. Thurston did on the street trees. I wondered if you are planning to include at least some space for street trees or will any trees be removed in order to widen the sidewalk through this area?
That's a great question. And to, let me address the first part. This, this, again, the scope of the project did not include any landscaping elements, any vegetation. We, we were not scoped to provide a planting plan. To answer your question about will there be space? So again, we're somewhat constrained in what we can do given the budget. And we're trying to maximize how much space at a minimum, that six foot or even sometimes five foot of pedestrian pathway free of obstacles so that we can have, you know, two people passing in either direction. And really, it's, you know, two wheelchairs passing in either direction is what we're trying to strive for. So, you know, what that means is that is a continuation of the sidewalk, for the most part, extending all the way to the curb, the back of the curb. So to answer your question, we are not creating new areas for, you know, buffer areas between that sidewalk and the street.
Okay, thank you. The, the 11-foot lanes, it's the intention there just to sort of slow traffic through traffic down? Or are you making room for additional amenities of some kind? And what, what sort of impact would, would, if at all, would that have on future BRT, which hopefully may someday come to Route 7?
Yes, a great question. And we're all anxious for that BRT system to come through Route 7. To answer your question, Broad Street is already 44 feet, essentially, give or take, which is 11 feet per lane. So, and I know Paul and I have had a lot of discussion about this, is the really value in pushing the curb one or two feet to minimize one of those lanes or two of those lanes, one in each direction to 10 feet, because you would want to keep at least one, you would want to keep your outside lane theoretically in each direction, 11 feet for your larger vehicles, for your buses like BRT, for your emergency vehicles. So we are not proposing any narrowing of Broad Street. The only narrowing would come in the way of the side streets where we're, we're doing those curb extensions, those bump outs.
So is that what the 11-foot, I, I guess I'm confused because I thought somewhere in the, in the materials that referenced lanes being narrowed to 11 feet. Is that the travel lanes on the side streets then?
Yes, that goes, I think that original language goes back to the original grant application again before my involvement. And like I said, through this PE phase, we've had those discussions about whether or not there was any possibility, feasibility of narrowing Broad Street itself. And like I said, they're already 44 feet, for 11-foot lanes.
Okay, all right. So no change. The, the brick paver crosswalks, I know in the, like, in the past, there have been some concerns from DPW about, you know, the, the maintenance on those and the safety of those. And they're not bricks, from what I've heard from them, and they're not really intended to be used in a roadway yet. I know that's our streetscape plans. Any thought about whether they're still appropriate here?
Yeah. So to answer your question, to be clear, they aren't bricks, they are pavers. And, you know, the design has moved away from using actual bricks because those can become dislodged more easily and become projectiles. Pavers, not so much. The application of the pavers, how they're applied has changed over time as well, as far as, you know, the, the materials that are being done. This isn't just laying the pavers on top of, of an existing base. We're actually excavating down and rebuilding up that crossing with the appropriate, you know, base and subbase and all the interim layers to ensure that we do have a nice, firm, solid. And, and then it's bound on the sides as well. It's, it's held together, not just by the street, not by the pavement, but also by the, the soldier pavers and, and that outside. So long story short, yes, the answer is yes.
Great. Thank you. That's great. And then just a couple of other, it seems, so I think we're going to have four total hawks along the route, along Broad Street. Is that correct? Through City Falls Church?
So the other two. Yes, the other two are Fairfax and at Buxton.
So, and then the one at Oak and then the one potentially at ends of Virginia. So I guess I'm just thinking, those are maybe unfamiliar to some motorists. And I, I wonder if there's any sort of like educational campaign. I don't know. I mean, obviously, like most of the traffic on, on Broad is through traffic. It's not like we can necessarily reach those people or signage or something. You know, I, I didn't actually know that when it started doing the wag, like wag flash that you could go. I always just wait. And I haven't encountered one of those in a while. So just thinking that they're, they're a little unfamiliar.
That's a great point. And I completely concur with you that some sort of educational campaign should be done in conjunction and prior to turning these signals on.
I don't, I mean, again, I don't know how many people it would reach, but I don't see why we couldn't put something on the website page for the city or.
Certainly residents will be using Broad Street. So it would be helpful.
Put it out in the weekly email that goes out or something.
And, and there's great examples of that. City of Alexandria has a nice webpage talking all about the PHBs in their city. Arlington County, very similar educational material on its website. VDOT, there's one that we designed on Backlick in Fairfax County. They are popping up more and more. They are still somewhat new, understandable, but they are becoming more pervasive. And there is an education campaign that, that should probably go along with that. I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm helping VDOT right now on the, on its website for the whole state. This is one such device among many others, like for example, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon is another that you're starting to see in jurisdictions popping up. We're putting together a lot of information, like the video you saw. Unfortunately, you didn't get to hear the, the, the verbal part of it, but they're intended exactly for that, to explain to the users, both the motorists and the pedestrian, how they operate.
Great, thank you. And then I guess my, my last one is just more of a comment. It just, it seems to me like there's not much for bikes here. It just, it seems to me like there's not much for bikes here. You know, wider sidewalk is, is, is great, but Broad is, you know, an important east-west route for city residents. It would be really great if, I, it doesn't sound like it's going to be this project, but maybe in some future project, we can lay the groundwork for some sort of better bicycle infrastructure on Broad. I would be a big supporter of that.
Yeah, noted, noted. It's hard, it's hard to, that's a hard one to achieve in that space, but I know that's a goal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Komat. Any other commissioners have comments? I am also sensitive to the, our other agenda item coming up after this, which will probably take some time. I'm seeing any other hands raised. Yeah, I would just, just to kind of sum up the comments, I mean, in my view, I, on the one hand, yeah, it certainly, it's disappointing that, you know, things, you know, we can't sort of provide, you know, the ideal streetscape that the comp plan envisions and that, you know, we obviously would, would, would hope for. But I think Mr. Puentez put it well, that in some of these cases, you can't let the perfect prevent, you know, incremental good things from happening in the interim. And, you know, even, even with respect to the width, I mean, that to me also is unfortunate that, you know, we have to go down to six foot width, just given how, you know, how high the speeds are and how there's, you know, no, you know, strip or anything between, in some cases, between, you know, the curb and the, between that sidewalk and the traffic. But it's better than what it is today. And if you can fix that, you know, the pole in front of the Leatherworks is probably, we have many poles and sidewalks in the city, as everyone knows, it's like the bane of our existence. But that one is probably one of the most visible and probably, given the number of people that walk by there, probably the one of the worst. So that alone can be fixed from this. That's a huge, that's a huge thing. It's just, just like, it's just symbolically, it's like, it just makes the city look bad to have something like that existing, you know, surrounding, but beings, you know, surrounded by so many other good things that are happening. So without waxing on forever, I think that in general, yeah, if we're getting the grant funding and we can make things that'll make it better in the interim, and then as sites do redevelop, and I don't think it would be to the, to the public commenter, in some cases, I don't think it'll be 50 years. I mean, I think we can look to enhance it even further. But in the meantime, if in the next two, three years, we can upgrade these sections and make it safer and easier for people to move around on foot and on bike, that's a good thing. So with that said, I think, you know, it's, in general, it's obviously a positive, a positive step. So Paul, any other next steps on this, or do we see this again, or?
This would be, I think this would be the one information, information session that was planned. I think there, I think the next stop, if there is additional information, would probably be closer to 90 or 100%, and I think that would just be information about, you know, what's, what's, you know, pending construction. So I think next steps, if the commission wants, we can certainly, if you all want to pick somebody from the commission to maybe work with staff on a, on a comment letter, so that, that we've got something on writing. That might help clarify the, the commission's comments.
Okay. Well.
If you feel this is serious.
I don't want, I don't want to pick people to do that, but.
I think Tim is raising his hand.
Tim's hand is up.
Oh, no, he put it down.
Ask me a question, actually.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it, Brent, if you would like me to.
Thank you, Ms. Komat. I don't think we're, I don't think you're looking for a long letter, Paul, maybe, maybe bullet points, I mean.
If everyone should email me their thoughts, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, well, I think part of what you're hearing, right, is that, is that projects are, I mean, obviously, they're still bound by the, the project scope and the project agreement with VDOT. But there are things that are going to flex between 30, 30 and 60, between 60 and 90, 90 and 100. And so I think, you know, some sort of guidance from the planning commission on, on what are the key items to make sure sort of stay in the project? So that you do have the, the sort of urban design group of the city sort of providing some guidance to the project team.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback tonight.
Thank you for, for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, well, moving along, we're a little behind schedule, but that seems to be par for the course sometimes, some nights. Now, what we will go out of public hearing mode and into work session mode to get a work session, presentation and discussion on the West Falls Church, both SE amendment and the first SESP site plan for that project. And let's see, Paul, who do we have? I know we have Ms. Aubrey, and we have our staff, and we have the applicant team. I suppose staff should go first.
Yeah, I would suggest a similar model to last time. I'll introduce it briefly, turn it over to our staff planner, Carly Aubrey, for the staff report, and then send it over to the applicant team for their presentation and then question and answer with the, the commission. So just to introduce the item, before I turn it over to Ms. Aubrey, this is scheduled to be the planning commission's last work session on both the, on all the West Falls Church items that are included in your packet tonight. And there's, there's a few of them. It's, it's an amendment to the special exception. And I'll, I'll let, I think in general, there are no changes to the programming. There are some slight modifications. I'll, I'll let Ms. Aubrey highlight those. And then your final work session on the SESP, the special exception site plan that goes along with it. I think also in your packet, I want to make sure I don't misquote this, there's also an item to look at a minor lot line adjustment, which also involves recommendation on land acquisition. And that's, that's shifting the lot lines between the school and the economic development site. But like I said, this is before you for your final work session. And then I might ask, Ms. Aubrey, as you start your presentation, I think this is certainly a big project, but I think it's helpful to go back and talk just a little bit about the history and the fact that these plans have been reviewed by a lot of folks over a relatively long stretch of time in a lot of different public venues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carly Aubrey for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commission. Yeah, I think I'll kind of preface what I'm going to walk through tonight and then turn it over to, to the development team. So first, I'll, as Paul mentioned, provide a kind of a history of the review that's happened with this project, as well as the next steps. And then review what the requested amendments are to the special exception entitlement. Discuss the changes since the first and second submission of the SE amendment and the SESP for Phase 1. And then discuss the planning commission's recommendations on those first submissions and, sorry, key staff comments on the second submission. And then for a couple of these, I'll, I'll be brief, because the development team has the nice graphics. And so some of these make more sense when you're looking at the plans. And my voice has decided to go on, go out, I guess. So, the special exception entitlement was approved in July of 2019 for a 1.4 million square foot mixed use development to be built in two phases. The SE amendment and the special exception site plan for Phase 1 was first submitted in June of 2020. That was referred to boards and commissions by city council in July of 2020. And the board and commission review occurred during July and September of last year. And all the board and commission comments can be found in attachment two of the March 1 city council work session, work session report. The planning commission held a public hearing on August 5 of last year and provided the recommendations that can be found on pages three through four of this evening's planning commission work session report. And since August, and now, the focus shifted for a while to amendments to the comprehensive agreement between, that is between the city and FCGP. And that's associated with this development. Those requested amendments were due to the COVID-related impacts to the financial market. There were two town halls to discuss those changes in December and January, and those amendments have recently been executed. And then a second submission of the SE amendment and SESP for Phase 1 were submitted in January of 2020, and that's the subject of tonight's work session. A city council work session for those applications was held on March 1, and a town hall was held on March 2. In terms of future meetings and the anticipated schedule for the second submission, after tonight's work session, there will be a school board work session next week, March 23. There will be a city council work session on April 5, and that will be focused on transportation items, urban design elements and environmental elements of the plan. Economic Development Authority will discuss the project on April 6. The planning commission recommendation is currently scheduled for April 7. There will be another city council work session on April 12 to discuss ADUs, affordable dwelling units, the voluntary concessions and the fiscal impacts. Another city council work session, that's kind of a final wrap-up, is scheduled for May 3. And then city council public hearing for action on the items will be either late May or June. And this is, this schedule is slightly different from what is in the planning commission report. So I just wanted to flag that. So switching to what are in the plans, the review, but to review what the SE amendments are. And again, I'll just briefly hit these, since it's, some of these are better to look at, at the plan. There's an adjustment to the overall parcel boundary and the Phase 1 boundary. There are modifications to the proposed uses, such as mainly the civic square foot is requested to be reduced from 20,000 to 13,000. And there's an additional request for uses that are not allowed by Ride and B2. There's changes to the general building locations, primarily in blocks B1 through B4 and garage D2. There's changes to street layout as a result of those building location changes, as well as the intersection at Commons and 7. There's a phasing change request for the senior housing to lag a little bit behind the Phase 1, but still before Phase 2 comes in. And then a couple changes to the SE voluntary concessions, such as the programming and uses that I just mentioned. And then changes to timing requirement related to the finishing of the residential building before the office and hotel components. On pages 10 through 11 of the council March 1 work session report, there's a detailed discussion of the key changes since the first submission. I'll just, again, highlight a few, and then the development team can elaborate. There's changes to the Route 7 Commons Drive and Chestnut Street intersection based on coordination with VDOT in the county. That signal has been approved by, by VDOT. There's some narrowing of the streetscape width along Route 7 and Haycock in order to accommodate proposed mitigation options for future traffic impacts. Along 7, the streetscape standards would still be met with a minimum of 20 feet. There is a section in, on Haycock that would be reduced to approximately 16.75 with a minimum of nine-foot clear sidewalk. The bike lanes along Commons has been shifted from the sort of quote-unquote "inside" to the outside of the travel lane, and that's based on conversations with Fairfax County. And then there's some architectural elevation changes as a result of comments received on the first submission. The pedestrian via between blocks A and D, there's comments on accessibility. So a one-stop elevator has been added to the multifamily building. And so that's kind of the main changes. Going back to the planning commission's review of the initial submission, the planning commission recommendations are listed on pages three through four of tonight's work session report. And the development team will walk through these with more detail. But I'll mention that it does appear that most of the items have been addressed and, and/or the additional information requested has been provided. Staff comments are included in attachment 3, and I'll just highlight a couple of the key comments. There's a request that the Leesburg elevation should be further developed to apply the same massing and design principles used in other buildings in the development. The hotel building needs more development to be consistent with the level of design quality provided in other parts of the project. As I mentioned before, the streetscape, there's some narrowing of that one section on Haycock, as well as tree planters are combined in several areas along Haycock and Route 7. The streetscape standards do provide for flexibility on those standards, but we are asking for justification for those variations and as well as to confirm that the design still provides adequate spacing and orientation of other required elements, as well as spaces for pedestrians to pass. In terms of lead, there's opportunities for the hotel and office to enhance their energy efficiency and performance optimization scores, as well as opportunities to better address the heat island effects. In terms of the TDN monitoring, we'd like to look at, get better clarification on how the monitoring will occur, especially when these projects are developed in phases, where the buildings come online at different times and the garages come online at different times. And then issues around the management of delivery trucks, car share drop-off and food delivery should be further discussed to make sure it works adequately on the site. So that's, I think I'll leave my presentation at that. And then turn it over now to the development team that can walk through more of these changes with the graphics, and then also how your planning commission recommendations from August have been addressed. And I'm not sure, we have a number of people from the development team? I'm not sure who's going to be doing the presenting.
I, I'm going to start. This is Laura Schoenfeld from Hoffman. And Maria Lashinger is going to join me from Grovesley. Maria, do you want to? Just want to make sure you're, you're ready to go.
Good evening. This is Maria with Grovesley.
Laura, you just. Good evening. Great. So we are. Let me try again. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are here to go through the items that Carly brought up. And we have tailored our presentation tonight to really just focus on the items from your August 2020 comments. But again, are happy to go through any other items or questions that you may have. So let me see, can I steal the screen and share our presentation? One second. All right. So again, this is the West Falls Economic Development Project. It's our SESP second submission, and we are now going through comments and changes, and particularly going through the comments that your team provided to us, like I said, last August. So I'm just pulling up the list from Carly. The first two actually were about traffic and the intersection. And I wanted to just be able to go through the beginnings of the site plans, the kind of where we are right now, just to refresh everybody's memory and kind of give a graphic explanation to what Carly was just going over in, in her report. So again, we are at Route 7 and Haycock Road. And we have kind of a spine that goes through the main part of the project called the Commons that is now going to be lined up with the updated version of Chestnut, which we'll talk about in a minute. But just to remind you again of the different uses, we have a 4, approximately 400-unit apartment building here with a grocer on the first floor. We have extensive retail on the Commons and down the side streets on the first floor of all of our buildings. We have extensive retail on the Commons and down the side streets on the first floor of all of our buildings. We have the parking garage here that will serve the... And then will also serve the, the retail and general, general site use from this, this garage. There's also a garage underneath this building that serves the grocery store and general retail. Across the Commons, we have the condo building here, they have their own parking garage. Then next door to that, we have an extended stay hotel here. It's part of the Hilton brand, we'll hopefully be announcing the exact type in the near future. It's adjacent to another above-grade garage here that's going to be used for hotel guests and retail customers in kind of off-hours, but mainly used by the office building during office hours, and this is our office. And then we have a future office parcel and a future condo parcel over here. So if you'd seen the first SESP submission, there's really no change here, and then this is kind of a refinement of our program from the SCE. So Maria, if you want to just walk through kind of the basics of kind of the access and streets and all that, and then we can talk a little bit more about the plan to realign Chestnut to work here.
Absolutely, thank you. Again, I'm Maria Lashinger with Grove Slade Transportation Consultants for the project. We took a high-level review and submitted a number of transportation-related studies and, and, and plans. First, starting with that traffic impact study where we did look at, at the access points, we looked at the intersection surrounding the study, the study area surrounding the site. That traffic study was ultimately approved by VDOT at the tail end of last fall, actually. We then looked at the intersection of Route 7 and the Commons, and we did a prepared signal justification report, which is VDOT's new term for signal warrant studies, to determine if a signal was appropriate at that location. Ultimately, it decided that it was, and VDOT approved that study same timeframe as the traffic impact study. We then evaluated the traffic signals along Haycock and provided signal warrant studies for both of the new signals, yep, at Street C and Mustang Alley, provided that to, to the city for review and ultimately approval for both of those locations. And then the final piece of the transportation puzzle was we did an updated TDM plan with parking management included that was, that was submitted with the last, the last go-around here. The parking management plan discussed the need to, to decrease single-occupant vehicles, get people out of their cars, and utilizing other modes of transportation to and from the site. And included in there was a parking management portion, which talked about the need for shared and unbundled parking, as well as managing truck access to and, and through the site. You know, the overarching theme, I think, for all of these various submittals, be it for, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, or for vehicles, was the desire to provide safe access to the site, but also through the site for those folks who wanna head north and ultimately utilize transit up at the metro just to the north, and encourage that as much as we possibly can through positive design. Kinda back to you, Laura, if you wanna hit the next one?
Thanks, Maria. We will hop over just to talk about Chestnut for a minute, and then go back to some of the architectural changes. So I'll, I'll let you explain this one to your...
I'm sorry, absolutely. So on this one, the, the design has definitely changed, probably since the last time folks saw this one, through extensive coordination with VDOT and Fairfax County as a stakeholder on the south side. Some of the, the design, the design concerns or elements that we really needed to think about as we were putting forth the plan for this intersection was ensuring that the north side and the south side were properly aligned, so there was no offsets, the intersection didn't have any skews on any of the approaches. The goal with terminating the right-of-way up there, you can see it kind of ship in green on the slide, terminating the Chestnut Street right away at that location was to prohibit or decrease the amount of cut-through traffic for the neighbors, exactly, the neighbors down to the south, providing safe pedestrian crossing at this location. You can see the crosswalk there for those folks on the south side wishing to walk or bike up to the metro. And then the other piece of the puzzle, I think was one of the most onerous, was trying to meet VDOT design standards for traffic signal equipment locations, entrance with throat length, curb ADI, and meeting all their, their rigorous standards at this location. I think the design as presented on the screen today hits all those, those high points, and VDOT and SCDFT both got on board with, with the design here. This is also a design that was ultimately approved with the signal justification report. So the operations presented there are, the geometry is what's reflected on the screen currently.
Great, thanks, Maria. We are now going to have another member of the team.
Can I jump in and ask a question? Are we, are we, we have questions now, or should we wait till...
Um, presentation is pretty short, we only have about four more slides, so...
All right, all right, why don't you finish then?
Or, but if, but if you wanna ask one now, that...
Well, just a second question. So you're proposing that the signal now is gonna, there're gonna be an entrance into that commercial, into the commercial building in Fairfax County? That's, that's gonna be where the signal's located? Am I reading that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So people coming up on Chestnut Street are gonna have to turn into the, onto private property? And then, and obviously, has the owner of that property been involved in the discussions?
Yes, extensively. They've been involved in the discussions, and we have a memorandum of understanding in our working through of more detailed agreement with them.
And is the other leg of Chestnut, so, okay, that's gonna be closed, existing Chestnut's gonna be closed, and everyone's gonna have to go through the parking lot where the liquor store is and the, the other uses in there? Okay.
Maria, do you wanna talk a little bit more about kind of the, the logic in that decision?
Yeah, I was gonna say, absolutely. I think a lot, a lot of the design considerations there were helping implement Fairfax County's vision to decrease the cut-through traffic to the south. The thought was introducing a traffic signal at Chestnut would actually entice folks to try to bypass other routes and utilize Chestnut to go south. So by creating a, a less attractive, if you will, entrance, exactly, as the hand is showing on the screen, it's not as enticing for folks who would otherwise wanna use Chestnut Street to drive south through the neighborhoods and bypass some of the other traffic in the area. So it's a different way, I guess, of traffic calming than we're used to seeing, but likely an effective one.
All right. No, I mean, I, I understand, I understand what's going on on the Fairfax side really well, but um... Okay, and then, and the owner of the property is, is on board, obviously, with the, with allowing that. You said there's a memorandum of understanding, but is, is the state, is VDOT obtaining an easement, or is it gonna be actual right-of-way?
Yeah, so, sorry, this is Evan Goldman from EYA. Nice to see all of you again. Yeah, so we've been, we've been working with the property owner there from the very beginning. In fact, they were one of the biggest advocates for making sure that there was a full movement traffic light in that location, because they were concerned about losing tenants and business in their shopping center. And so we have a memorandum of understanding with them that works, walks through this design, and they've been engaged in all the meetings with the county, with VDOT. So yeah, VDOT, VDOT, that, that will be an easement, it'll be a privately controlled easement on the private property, and the Chestnut Street public area access will end, in essentially in Hammerhead. And the, the benefit of that, from a community perspective, there was a lot of concern about cut-through traffic, so one of the benefits is, you know, apps like Waze, Google Maps won't take through movement cars through this direction, because it will look like a private street that ends in a cul-de-sac. But for the local neighbors that do want access out, they'll always know it's there. Obviously, some people will choose to use it, but the goal is to deflect some of the trips out of the, out of that, from that direction. So yeah, it's a, it's a creative, unique, different thing that you don't see very often, but it solved a whole bunch of different problems that people are having.
Great. Thanks, Evan. This is actually the perfect segue, because I was going to introduce you, so you could talk about our next slide. If you wanna talk about another one of the items that was brought up in the August 2020 comments was the connection between, let me go back to the site plan for a second, the connection, if you are coming into the site at Haycock through Street C and how you kind of get up to the, the Commons level, and we had stairs here and an elevator in the garage, and got some requests to continue to think that through to make sure that it was a great experience for people, no matter how they were accessing the site, so...
So if you don't mind, leave it on that slide for one second, and we'll come back to this one. So in our original proposal, when we came up with this idea of the pedestrian cut-through, you might remember this is about a year ago during our SCE, one of the major challenges of this site is the grade differential. So from Commons Drive down to Haycock is almost 23 feet. Sorry, it's, it's more than 23 feet, I think it's almost 26 feet. And so we'd always tried to get a street to cut through where Street B and C come through, but it was not gonna be a handicap-accessible street, the grade would have been north of 8% and upwards of close to 10% in some locations. It wouldn't have been a street that could work for loading, there were a whole bunch of issues with it. And so we ultimately bit the bullet and decided to use the garage as a mechanism to split the grade, so that you can enter at Haycock at a lower level, and then at Street B at a higher level within the garage. But then, of course, we wanted to make sure there was a good pedestrian connection through. In our original plan, the residential apartment building was up against the garage for almost that entire length of the garage facade, that entire 120-foot length, and it felt constricted. So some of the feedback we got from the council, and I believe from the Planning Commission, but definitely from the council, was that they wanted to see that be opened up, feel more generous, welcoming, and then also make sure that there was a handicap-accessible route that wasn't second in line to the pedestrian route up the stairs, that it was, it was a celebrated way for those who need to use an elevator to get up there. So as you can see, we pulled the apartment building back quite a bit. I believe it's roughly 40 feet, so that now you're, you really have a nice open space there as you, as you progress up into the via, which is the space where along that pedestrian connection. The reason we kept part of the apartment building closer to the garage is that that is, that is the parking for the apartment building, so there's a bridge connection up there, and we wanted to make sure that that bridge connection was as short as possible for the residents. Then, second to that, the, it used, the original design, if you were from on Haycock, let's say, and needed to use the elevator, you would walk into the garage, through the garage to the elevator core on the other side of the garage to the left, and then you'd go up the elevator and out the other side. So all of those people that were choosing that route were going into the garage. Now we can go to the other page. So in the new design, we've added an additional elevator. Actually, you know, it's probably easier to show it on the, on the old page, just if the plan is bigger. So in the new design, we've added an elevator in that green box right at the base of the staircase, so that whether you're going up the stair or you need to use an elevator, it's the same experience. That elevator will pop you up right into the beginning of the via, and then you'll walk or, you know, to the extent you're in a wheelchair, use the wheelchair through the via to get out to Street B, so the same experience for pedestrians or folks using the, the elevator. So that is the general concept, and then you can see what that looks like in practice. You can see how much more open that whole space is now, how the building is pulled back. You can see the staircase behind that tree. You can see the staircase popping out in front of the garage, and so it's something that's highly visible and feels safe. And then the elevator, in the upper-right image, we're now at the top of the staircase, and on the left, you can see the canopy from the elevator. So you literally come right up the staircase, the elevator's on your left, and then you progress through the pedestrian via, which is only about 60 feet long, and, and takes you through to the Commons. And that area will have art and murals and other things to make it a beautiful space.
Great, thanks, Evan. So that, that part of the presentation took care of the first four of the eight comments, I think that we had received from the Planning Commission. The next two, actually, two, the next two, we're just talking about the voluntary concessions, which again, we submitted an updated version of, both responding to the SCE voluntary concessions and an updated version of voluntary concessions in the SESP, but we're happy to review any of those during this, this conversation. And then the last two questions were talking about affordable housing units and kind of equity and inclusion principles and the place-making. And we are looking forward to continuing to work with the community and the council and Plan Commission and various other groups with the, with the city on the place-making. We, we have kind of paused where we are right now, and we'll continue to work through that in the future. So definitely bringing in the equity and inclusion and, and all the other principles that are important to the City of Falls Church. We, we look forward to that opportunity. And then with the affordable housing units, again, we are continuing forward with the, what was noted from the time of the RFP, which is the, the 6% of the units at 60% AMI, and that has been designed into our 400-unit apartment building. So looking forward to continuing the conversation on any more detail on that, either today or in the April 12th work session with the city council. So I had also just pulled together our newest renderings, just to give you a little bit more of a sense of where we are right now on the design. This is looking again from 7 and Haycock at the grocer, which the lease is signed. We're not, right now, at liberty to share which, which grocer it is, but we're very excited about this part of the project, and we're coordinating them with the building already. So as you can see, you'll have this entrance at Haycock, and then you actually go up a stair and elevator into the grocer, which is actually on this second floor. But we will do a lot with the entrance to be able to make this space feel really alive and great for the pedestrian experience. And then you have the apartment building above with the variety of ins, outs, different materials, different colors per the comments that we received last year on the building, just to make sure that, you know, it feels architecturally exciting and, and vibrant, even though it's a really large building from both the Haycock and Route 7 side. So we wanted to share that new rendering with you. And then these two, if you had seen any of our presentations in the fall, you had seen a version of these, but we're continuing to update them as we continue the design. You're really standing on the, the Commons here, looking at the apartment, kind of looking out towards 7 with your back to the condo, with the office building down here, so kind of getting this view out back to 7. And then we have the view of our hotel. You've kind of turned around 180 degrees and are looking at the hotel and the condo building back over here, just giving you a sense of how the architecture, again, is kind of related, but each building still has its own, you know, architectural vocabulary, and then how we're really using this retail band at the ground floor to bring a lot of life and color and pop and excitement to the common space. So those are our major updates we wanted to talk about that addressed the Planning Commission's comments, but we're happy to answer further questions. So we'll turn it back to you, Carly.
Sorry, searching for my mute. So I think, well, at this time, we can turn it over to the Planning Commission for questions and comments, if there's anything else rendering-wise you'd like to see, or any questions for staff?
All right. Thank, thank you, everybody. So I guess with, with that, any commissioners have questions or comments? Mr. Stevens is, he's got his hand up. Unmute Mr. Stevens.
Okay, is that better? Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. I continue to make a lot of fine-tuned improvements to, to the project as a whole. Question regarding the, the bike lanes. You mentioned that they are gonna get shifted from next to the Commons to over on the other side of the road there to next to the parked cars. Just wondering with the dissolution of the HITS Virginia Tech partnership, if that opens up any possibilities for Fairfax County to perhaps see the wisdom of the original placement of that, that bike lane next, right next to the Commons? That, of course, would prevent door-ing from bikers riding along next to parked cars there.
Yeah, I, I can address that. I mean, the, so either way, whether Virginia Tech is happening or not, there is a desire and a drive to try to get the road punched through on the Virginia Tech property, which is important, obviously, to the high school site and the Lamotta site, as well as the future redevelopment of Virginia Tech site. I'd say that the county bike planner who we worked with on the comprehensive plan for the Lamotta-Virginia Tech site was extremely impassioned about the location of the bike lanes. I don't think there's any chance that they would agree to a different configuration. And I think their, their view, we had a series of meetings with the city and with the county jointly. I think their view is that while it is, it is a unique and interesting idea that we proposed, and it's been done in a few locations, that now that they have enough data to see how those locations are performing, that they end up being less used as bike lanes, because they're not in the traditional location where people expect them to be. And so they, they, you know, her comment was, not all new ideas are good ideas. And so in the places where this has been done, in their view, it has not been successful, and their goal is to make the bike lanes as used as... and their goal is to make the bike lanes as used as possible. Their preference would be for, you know, an off-road cycle track, which we don't have room for in our design and would kind of create a barrier to the Commons. But second to that, since we weren't willing to do that, they pushed hard for this idea. And I think our feeling, while we liked our original idea, we think it's a great idea. We think this one works quite well as well and it probably does create a better resolution of the bike lanes as we approach Route 7. We were starting to struggle, given the intersection design now at Route 7 because of VDOT, we were struggling to figure out how to resolve getting the car, the bike safely from Route 7 into that center median space because there won't be a stop sign as cars come in off Route 7 at that intersection because of VDOT's requirements for impediments to traffic movement within a certain distance of the intersection. And so you would have had a situation where you would have this bike conflict, essentially bikes crossing a place where there was no stop sign. And so in the end, this is likely the safer solution, even though we, you know, we do love our old design. I think if we had gotten VDOT to accept our old vision for that intersection, which was a wider intersection with two legs, where those bike lanes could come all the way to Route 7 in a median, then it would have been a great solution. But given the new design, it probably is not feasible.
I think that's unfortunate, the original plan that you had. I think it's a better idea as someone who bikes a lot.
No, I agree. Yeah, I think she did agree that people who are avid cyclists would probably prefer it. But, you know, her fear and her experience, she was pretty well spoken about the topic, was that it has not encouraged more bike riding. But anyway, that's where we ended.
All right, very good. For bicyclists coming from the WNOD from the south and coming up along Shreve on what will be eventually, you know, a developed cycle track along now. Will bikers then have to cross Haycock and then go along Broad Street before they get to the Commons if their end route is the metro station?
Well, they'll have one of two options. So they can either do that. In our design, we have a shared use path along Broad Street that is kind of separately marked from the typical pedestrian sidewalk. So they'll have that space along Broad Street to get to the Commons. That's probably the most logical route, but they could also continue to Mustang Alley where there's an additional shared use path bike facility that goes to the high school entrance all the way along that northern edge as another way to get to the Commons and continue north. They could then also obviously continue on the regular sidewalk along Haycock until they get to Falls Church Drive. But there's, until Virginia Tech redevelops, there's no plan to widen that leg of Haycock, obviously. So yeah, so there's a few options for how the cyclist can get to the metro.
Got it. For the option going along Broad Street, will there be signage? And will that be enough to easily accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians?
Yeah, it's a good question on the signage. I don't think we've gotten into that level of detail yet. It's, we've designed a, if you look at our kind of streetscape design within the package, there's an area that's, I believe it's a slightly different patterning. And we had a precedent image in our placemaking package that had little, almost like discs or circles on it that said, you know, this was a shared use path versus the pedestrian sidewalk next to it. But we have not, you're right, we have not gotten to that level of detail on it yet, but that's something we can look to.
I potentially see enough interest in bicyclists, you know, that want to bike across the metro station and using that.
Yeah.
Benefit from the signage there to alert pedestrians, especially that, hey, watch out for the bikes because they'll be here.
Yeah, you also may see people from the residential community coming up through the, you know, Chestnut. Now that Chestnut's a dead end, it won't be as active in the street. And so if they get to the end of Chestnut, they'll be able to cross the intersection directly into the bike lanes as well.
Right, right. Very good. I noticed that you, the development team agreed to do the quarterly meetings. And I've attended just about all of the quarterly meetings that the Founders Row project has involved. And those have been very useful. So I very much appreciate that you do those and I think you'll find them useful. They're short meetings, but they allow neighbors to bring up an issue or two. It gets resolved quickly and everybody goes away happy. Regarding charging stations for electric vehicles, I don't anticipate any bandwidth to increase the numbers that are in the voluntary concessions. But I'm just wondering, once you get to that 30th tenant who wants a charge station and exhausts the capacity of the conduit, will the 31st customer in On be charged for the installation of conduit? Or will that be something that the landlord can basically absorb?
Laura, do you want to take that or do you want me to? I'm happy to start.
Yeah, go ahead, Evan.
So it's a good question and we had experience with this at Pike and Rose in Rockville. So for the most part, what these large mixed-use projects do is you have a contract with, you know, an EV charge company of some sort and they will largely pay for the install of the infrastructure in order to get the new customer. So if it's a condo buyer, let's say, that condo buyer, you know, would pay for a space and that condo buyer might pay for a charging station as part of their purchase of that space. If it's an office user, more than likely, even for the initial spaces, an office user would pay slightly more to have an EV charged space. The infrastructure would be paid for by the, largely paid for by the EV providing company. And then they would pay the additional fee that either goes to the company and partially to the landlord. For retail, you know, as demand happens, you know, like, for example, the grocery store in their lease with us has the right to add additional EV charges depending on what demand is. And what we would, what I've seen happen in other projects is as there is more demand, you end up having more supply because the EV charge companies pay for the infrastructure because they want the income stream. So this has not been a limiting factor in other projects. It's more, you know, it's almost more, I mean, the way people are doing things now, you're better off not actually over putting as much conduit in because you actually don't know where the demand is going to necessarily be. You'd rather have flexibility to know, you know, my demand is on the second level of this retail parking garage or it's over in the office garage or it's, you know, wherever that demand is going to be, you're going to be able to meet it because you're going to be able to make an economic deal that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I'd certainly agree. If there are no special construction updates, if it's just a standard charge that applies to everybody, then that's a way, you know, the urgency, so to speak, of having to, for the jurisdiction, local jurisdiction to come up with the right number as far as what the number are. So thank you.
Yeah, the good news is the market is getting better and better for this stuff. So in, you know, not in not all instances does market demand work, but in this case, it seems to be working.
Okay. The last question I had is regarding the Commons itself. I was reading some comments somewhere along the line and it wasn't clear as to who the owner of that common property was going to be. Is that been resolved?
So I believe the Commons is owned by the EDA and ground leased to, and ground leased to the developer and maintained by the developer. If Laura, maybe correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's right.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. Robin's also on.
Well, it was kind of an interesting question that was posed by somebody on staff in the city. And that is, well, what if somebody wanted protest using the comments, or hold a protest? Who would set the regulations for that? Would that be the city or would that be the landlord?
I don't know that we necessarily know the answer to that, but if the EDA is ultimately going to be owning the land, I would presume it would be the city.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. And see, any other commissioners have comments or questions they want to ask? Miss Koma, has your hand up?
Hi, yeah, thank you. I just have a couple. Can you show me maybe on that slide right there where exactly the sidewalk reduction is occurring, the one that there was a narrowing of the sidewalk? Or maybe it was the sidewalk is narrower?
It's up by Building D3 along Haycock.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. Okay.
And what happened there was, I think, we didn't realize when we initially set up the design of the project that the street angled in there a little bit. We thought it was relatively more straight than that. And then with the, so anyway, as a result of that, we were just a little bit off from being able to fit a garage and a residential building in that parcel in the future. And so it's, so that's the reason for the request.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, it would be great to have the full 20-foot space. The intersection, the connection between Street A and Street B through the Commons, how does that operate at this time? I remember some discussion about that earlier and I just was curious if there is any traffic control devices through there.
So that central space on Street A, right, exactly where Laura is pointing, is most of the time not going to be open. That will be a park essentially, but it will be paved so that cars can use it during special events or potentially during school pickup and drop-off. Because that's really where the flow of traffic from parents picking their kids up or dropping their kids off in the school drop-off zone on Street A and then coming back out and wanting to get to Mustang Alley. We may open that up if we feel like the traffic is to a place where it needs to be. If not, cars would cycle down towards Route 7 and go around and back north. So you can do a turnaround essentially at the south end of Commons Drive before you get to Route 7 and cycle back up. So that would be the way that we would typically do it, which would be a nice traffic calm, safe way for the cars to go and create more open space. But if there's a huge event or if there's a reason why we need to have that open at certain times of the day, we'll have that flexibility.
Okay, so the default is closed.
Yeah, because also, and the reason from Street B, you would be able to make a right turn and then a left turn onto Street A. But from Street A, you would never be able to get to Street B because it's one-way once you cross through that path. So you kind of have to go down and around the block to get back to Street B anyway. So, you know, instead of making that a road that's rarely used, we decided to close it and make it park space.
That sounds good. And then it looked like that there was a reduction in the amount of civic space, total square footage in the staff report. Can you explain what happened there?
Yeah, Laura or Robin, do you guys want to take that?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, the original contemplation of civic space included an indoor music venue with 4,000 square feet of outdoor terrace space. And that, we just weren't really able to make that happen for a lot of reasons, certainly COVID being one of them. And so with that particular user not coming to fruition, we had to sort of reimagine how we were working over the civic space to try to still meet the city's goals of having an indoor sort of conference and meeting space as well as continuing to advance conversations with some educational users that we've been talking to. So that was really the main driver of that change. So we currently have that indoor meeting sort of conference space that we're still really figuring out exactly how that's going to end up being programmed in terms of who's operating it. You know, will it be kind of a third-party operator? Well, we've talked to folks at the EDA about their interest in owning and sort of operating the space. There's a lot of different options I think we're still considering. But we essentially took that 4,000-square-foot outdoor terrace space that was originally supposed to be on part of the hotel and, you know, are saying that we're going to use some outdoor areas of the Commons for civic programming in a similar manner, but it won't actually be on top of the building as it previously was.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Koma. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Not hearing too much, you know. Maybe we've seen this project in various versions so many times now over the years that everyone feels satisfied. Actually, for me, honestly, I had some of the questions, I think, other folks have already asked and I was also going to ask about that change up in the Block D3, you know, in the SCE plans. But, you know, you kind of explained that. And again, I guess the other question, when I first saw this again, I'm glad, I was glad. I mean, overall, I mean, I think it's progressed and the signal at Chestnut, I think I said this when we first saw this several years ago, was whenever that was, was how key that was to the site working. And I'm glad to see that that was able to be worked out because I did have concerns about that along with some other issues. Have been any other, I mean, as far as like the TDM plan, I mean, has anything, I know, yeah, that's attached in here, but I don't know if there's been any changes in that worth reviewing tonight or?
I don't believe so, but that there's really any significant changes. But Maria, do you want to speak to anything if you have any other thoughts?
Agreed. The only change is, I think, from the very first initial was again, that inclusion of the parking management conversation and talking about shared and unbundled parking. And then there is a section in there talking about the performance reporting and the monitoring over time. So that's outlined in the study as well. Other than that, it's generally the same.
Okay. All right. And then I guess the only other thing, I think somewhere you mentioned that now there's more, you added more surface parking. And is that, I think you mean, is that parallel spaces like among Commons? Was that also in there?
We have approximately 20 parking spaces that are on the street through this. Our current plan, that number shifted a little bit from our previous plans, but remains pretty much the same amount as we've had throughout.
Okay.
I think in our SCE, we might have, didn't we not, maybe we didn't count them or something? So it might be a change, but not necessarily a physical change.
Right. Maybe we didn't differentiate them in that first iteration. Yeah.
And I don't want to make you run through all the voluntary concessions, you know, but as far as the changes to those, you know, is there, sort of, what were the highlights as far as the key updates in that? I mean, I did go through those, but?
Robin, maybe you want to take this, but I guess I would just say that I think there were actually very few changes from the SCE resubmitted voluntary concessions to the SESP ones. I think that we kept, there's a lot of consistency between those. I don't know, Robin, if you have a more detailed explanation that you wanted to give?
No, I mean, I think if anything, we tried, you know, maybe made some clarifications on some items that were left a little more vague during the SCE process or were sort of stated to be confirmed during the SESP. But I don't think there was anything major noteworthy.
Yes, this is Carly. I'll just add that we are, staff has gone through and made some edits or have some comments. And then we're planning on scheduling meetings with the development team within the next couple of weeks to talk about, like, the ADUs, getting that language, that plan finalized. And then there's that timing requirement that needed to change for the residential component to get, there was 100,000 square foot of the residential being held until the office and hotel started. Since there was changes in the, kind of where that residential happened, multifamily residential is occurring, we're going to look at changing that a little bit. And then there was something else that now I'm forgetting. Oh, the administrative process for any changes to the Commons, minor element changes. Besides that, everything, everything else was kind of more cleanup-type language.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Ari, but as far as the ADUs, what was your concern with that?
So the SCEVCs kind of deferred some of it to the SESP stage, such as what the plan would be, that the mix of units. There's flexibility in there as far as what the AMI would be on each unit, depending as long as the overall sort of baseline was still 6%. It's 16% AMI. And then fleshing out the cash-in-lou formula option. So those were kind of the details that we're working through now at the staff level and then have a meeting with the development team hopefully next week. have a meeting with the development team hopefully next week.
Yeah, I would just add, I think from our perspective, you know, we've always been holding in our pro formas the original six percent at sixty um percent AMI and the city are through the last round of boards and commissions and and talks with the city um and particularly Nancy Vincent and and Dana, that there might be a desire within the city to have a different affordable mix and, you know, obviously understanding it would have to be for us economically equivalent. Um, but that we were open to suggestions from the city on what they might want in lieu of what was originally proposed in the RFP.
Okay, I I I appreciate that. And I understand there are a lot of folks who are who are looking at that very carefully. Um, but I was, you know, interested to know what what the what the latest was on that. Um. Okay, let's see, again, I don't see any other any other hands up from commissioners. And so I don't know if that means that everyone's satisfied or just uh or just again, I've seen this project enough that we we feel comfortable with uh with with where it's at and and, you know, these changes are relatively incremental and and uh um, you know, don't radically change the overall the overall vision here of what we recommended, you know, previously. Um. So without hearing anything else from anybody, um, I I guess that's it for 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 that part of it. Now, Paul, as far as the um, the other elements of it, uh, as far as the the lot line adjustment and the land acquisition, um, are we going to go through that as well now? I mean, those are more minor issues, but um. Were you going to summarize those or Ms. Aubrey, is Ms. Aubrey going to summarize that?
Yeah, you'll be you'll be asked to make your recommendation to council uh at your next meeting on those items as well. Uh, Carly, do you want to walk through, uh, I guess, a brief description of uh what's involved?
Sure. Um, so for the lot line adjustment, and then uh Emily, if you could pull up, yeah, it's that illustrative site plan. Um. So that area that's marked in that Phase Two block, the point three three acres subject to land acquisition requests. That's the same land that's a part of the subdivision. I wish I could point. So the yellow line is currently the parcel boundary for the Economic Development Parcel. And a lot line adjustment request is to bump it out um to capture that additional third acre of land. So the request tonight is for the Planning Commission to hold a work session on that and then have a um action hearing on April seventh. And uh, just to kind of do a little brief summary. So the lot line adjustment would um move approximately fourteen thousand square feet from parcel C two, which is the school owned parcel to parcel D one, which is the Economic Development Parcel. And it would support the applications for the amendment to the previously approved S E and the special exception site plan. And the lot line adjustment would increase the Economic Development Parcel to approximately nine point seven eight acres. And it's designated as part of the future Phase Two Office Site on the S E and S E S E S P plans. Um, per Chapter thirty eight, the subdivision code preliminary and final plats are required for subdivisions, including changes in lot lines. Um, staff has reviewed the subdivision plats and no substantive issues were evident. Um, and then in terms of schedule, as I mentioned, we have tonight's work session and then Planning Commission action scheduled for April seventh. And so the, I don't know, should I just roll into the land acquisition? I don't. This guy, already guys have any questions on this particular plat?
Well, I mean, just the only, I mean, I I think I know the answer to this and I'll just, I mean, obviously, it's 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 still within the the overall, you know, the limits on the use of the property, you know, the 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 run with the land, you know, uh, given the annexation. Right, so obviously, we're still we're still below that. I'm just curious about, you know, how the 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 shift. Um, you know, how the shift occurred or was this anticipated or um like what precipitated this change now?
Oh, I think if Evan or Robin are still online, it had to do with sort of reorienting the Phase One Office Building, which created the need to push back that Phase Two Office Block a little bit, but I'll turn it over to Evan for that.
Yeah, yeah. So so it came from um Laura, maybe if it's helpful, maybe bring up that.
I can pull that plan back up. It it actually came from one step before that, I think. Hang on one second.
So so the old, the S E, when we got the S E initially approved, um, there we go. Um, we used to have two separate apartment buildings, um, one on the Northwest Block, the C Block, and one on the A Block, and then we had a condo in front of the A Block along the Main Street. Um, and then secondly, a lot, a a larger percentage of our parking was below grade initially in the S E. Uh, when we got our initial construction pricing back, um, God, now it's been eighteen months ago. It was, oh, I just wasn't eighteen, it was about fourteen months ago. Um, it was clear from the pricing that the cost to do that smaller apartment building, not combined with the other apartment building, was dramatically higher and that the parking costs had just escalated below for below grade parking to a place that was insane. I mean, it was like sixty to seventy thousand dollars of space, um, which is well above what what people were underwriting at the time. And so um, so for those two main reasons, we came up with some ideas for how we could redesign the site and make it economically feasible. We worked with the city over the period of about three months with Wyatt and Carly and staff from December of two thousand nineteen through February of two thousand twenty um to come up with a plan that kept all of the elements of the project, but allowed for a a more economically feasible project. And um, and that's where we ended up. Um, there were a few other minor changes. The hotel rotated, which was better. Um, the office rotated to be have better visibility on Route Seven, so that was better. So there were a whole bunch of positive things that came out of those changes. Um, the condo building got pulled back further from the high school and and we inserted Lane Four, make the circulation on that whole block better and to create a separation between the park and the building, which was something they were happy about. So if you take all, there were a whole bunch of positive changes and then we needed about an extra sixty or seventy feet um to make that Block B four work.
Yeah, that that that's helpful. And uh, right, and Carly, obviously, we're still we're still below whatever the upper limit was of land that could be used for economic development. We're still.
Yeah, we're about at twenty eight percent of the allowed thirty percent.
Okay, yeah, I knew we were, but I will get it on the record.
Yep.
Mr. Stevens has his hand up.
Yeah, I think in mathematical terms, the the numbers are nine point seven eight is less than ten point three eight.
That's correct.
We beat that test, we're in good shape. The only question I had, actually, uh, that's the one that you asked, which is, you know, we had the subdivision on this back in June of two thousand nineteen. And uh, so I I was just wondering, you know, wh- why we needing to change that, but Mr. Golden explained that very clearly. Uh, as long as the school is happy, and I'm sure they are because they are the the use of parking uh in that space when the when the building materializes. So uh, you know, there's a loss on their side, as I understand it. So, you know, I think it it this is uh taking it out of one pocket in the city and putting it in another. So uh, there you go. So I think I'm okay. Thank you.
So I think with that, Ms. Aubrey, you want to very quickly just segue into the uh the land acquisition side of this?
Sure, since it is um city owned land, acquiring land, um, it we're, it's being processed as a land purchase, basically. So that involves um per the Charter and Code of Virginia, it Planning Commission recommendation to City Council. So the staff report for that item um includes the history and background of the subject site, including the twenty nineteen land acquisition and conveyances between the city and the school board um that were both in support of the new high school site plan and the Economic Development Project. Um, and as we just discussed, up to thirty percent of the land can be used for any lawful purpose for the boundary adjustment agreement with Fairfax County. And the to new total parcel acreage for the Economic Development piece would be nine point seven eight acres or twenty eight percent. Um, the staff recommends that um council is going to schedule the item, well, it's on the agenda for March twenty second for City Council to refer it out to the Planning Commission and the School Board. So we're having our work session with you all tonight. Um, and then with a recommendation hearing set for April seventh. And that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey. Right, this is somewhat of a technicality here, but it does, it does have to go through the proper channels and vetting. And um so with that, are there any other questions or other commissioners on on this particular nuance of the of the project? It kind of goes goes kind of kind of self explanatory and perfunctory to some degree. Um. All right, not hearing any any comments or questions or concerns on the land acquisition. So we will, I guess, look forward to seeing that for action along with everything else.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We look forward to uh continuing the conversation on the seventh of April.
Thank you. Thanks to the project team and staff. And um, good to see the project continuing to move forward despite the uncertainty of the last year and difficulty in the retail environment and other other aspects. So we're still happy and glad to see things moving along in the right direction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Well, let's see here. Um. The next item brings us back to a action item, technically. Um, and that would be with, I believe, with Ms. Bazemore and staff on the Public Art Amendment to the Com Plan, um, to Chapter Three of the Com Plan and making our our formal recommendation on that. We've seen it before in a work session. Um, and I will, I guess, throw it back over to staff uh for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so I'll introduce it briefly before turning it over to Ms. Bazemore for her presentation. Uh, this, these items, I should say plural, uh, are before you for final action. Uh, there are two items. They're both described in the staff report. Uh, one is your uh recommendation on uh to council on the wording for the the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, which would be an addendum to uh Chapter Three, Community Character, uh, to to describe a public art policy for the city. Uh, the second item before you for action uh is a recommendation to council uh on an ordinance uh to formally adopt a in Arts and Culture District map. Uh, I'll let Emily, uh, Ms. Bazemore, describe both of those. Uh, and then also not flagged in the agenda, but this item should also be held as a a public hearing. So we should pause uh probably after the staff report for any public comment that may have come in. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bazemore.
Thank you, Paul. Um, good evening, commissioners. Um, I'm just going to run through briefly uh the staff report that's kind of in the form of a memo with some updates since you guys have last seen um the amendment. And so like Paul said, the request before you tonight is to hold a public hearing and take a final action in the form of a recommendation to City Council on the following, an amendment in addition to Chapter Three of the city's comprehensive plan um as well as an Arts and Cultural District map. And the adoption of this public art policy is included as an action item in the city councils to your work plan. Um, staff recommends approval of the two proposed motions, um, and that the Planning Commission recommend final approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the proposed Arts and Cultural District map to the City Council. Um, the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the map establish a positive and supportive vision for public art throughout the cities, commercial areas, and public lands. Um, the proposed amendment and map have been reviewed positively by the city's boards and commissions, um, which, of course, in the timing section, you guys will see all the different ones that have reviewed uh the amendment. Um, City Council uh reviewed the amendment and the map during their first reading on March eighth. Um, here, starting on lines twenty seven through lines thirty nine, um, you see a summary of their different comments and concerns. Um, and then right below it is the Planning Commission's work session with a comment matrix um and question matrix. So I'm going to go through you guys' first. Um, there was some questions about um the review process for the Founder's Row mural um and how it could be used as a model for public art engagement process in the future. Um, we noted this, uh, the process could serve as a potential framework for moving forward with our short term action listed in the amendment, um, establishing procedures for reviewing and accepting public art uh found on page six of the amendment. Um, also on page six, uh, establishing procedures for reviewing and accepting public art. Um, there was a comment that other organizations should be engaged on a situational basis um and that staff should reach out and engage other organizations as needed. Um, we've added language to the amendment to reflect this. Um, the language is as follows. Staff should engage other boards and commissions when appropriate. Um, these circumstances could be, for instance, if um they involve historic themes involving the Historical Commission or perhaps if arts being placed on um the library's property involving the library trustees board. Um, getting into, um, how does the Arts and Cultural District function geographically? That was a question during our last meeting. Um, again, the Arts and Cultural District spans throughout the city and is comprised of the adopted revitalization areas and public owned land. Um, based off of this response right here, I want to note that we ended up removing uh houses of worship from the Arts and Cultural District map and um kind of a summary of why is included in um the council staff report. Uh, the district functions to encourage investment towards public art in redevelopment opportunities and projects in these areas, again, revitalization areas and public owned land. Um, there was a suggestion to create an artist registry. Um, this is something that we took into account and um on page seven of the amendment, we now have um established a registry of local artists. Um, the Arts and Humanities Council would ultimately maintain this registry. Um, and it would be comprised of local talent from the Northern Virginia area um and Washington DC metropolitan region. Um, how will the art be maintained over time? Um, we again added another strategy to uh better reflect this. Um, and the strategy is on page seven, create a maintenance plan for public art. Um, and finally, uh, there was a question about the ad being included on um the wedding sculptures, pictures. We have and um ultimately removed the ad, um, just cut it right out from the pictures, um, no longer in the amendment. Um, again, background, staff analysis, and fiscal impact can be found in the staff report for City Council. Um, and then our timing for the amendment and um the adoption of the Arts and Cultural District map is listed here um from lines of well, on the table, starting on line fifty five. Um, here we are for our public hearing, March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, with the Planning Commission, and then it's expected to go to City Council um on April twelfth of twenty twenty one. And that's all for my presentation. Um, I have the amendment text here. I wanted to go over this really briefly. Um, we've included changes uh since you guys have last seen it, as well as since um City Council has last seen the amendment in yellow, um, so that they're more easily identified. Um, and also on the final page of the draft amendment text, we have uh appendix now that credits uh the UVA student consultants that created a public art policy back in, um, must have been the summer now, but a lot of what we've taken from this amendment uh was found in this public art policy full report. So we wanted to make sure that we gave them the proper credit as it it's great work that they did for the city. And that's all for my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bazemore. Um, any, I guess, before we, well, first of all, I guess we can check if there is, there's any public comment or uh public correspondence on this item, since it is a public hearing?
Um, no public comments have been received. No public comments have been received.
As Andy Rankin would say, just checking. And one day, we hope we have a better mechanism. As an aside, actually, that's a, go off on a tangent, but as an aside, I was talking with Mr. Stoddard, and we will look to, as soon as possible, if not by the next meeting, then perhaps after that, we will have mechanisms in place to allow the public to either call in or participate in the meetings, the same way other boards and commissions in the city have figured that out previously, or in the previous few months, other folks have done it, and we're going to do it too. So we'll have a better and more interactive way for the public to participate in what is rightfully a public meeting. Anyhow, so with that, I'll then open it up to any commissioners that have any comments, questions on this item. We did see it as the work session, and it appears most of our comments have been addressed. But Mr. Stevens, see, quick off the gun again, what's?
Just one quick, I don't know if it's a question or clarification, but on the top of page 5 of the staff report, that first item, you've added, staff should engage other boards and commissions when appropriate, which is good. But the request was to include organizations. So I'm just wondering if the language that you now have, would that preclude reaching out to organizations such as the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, or CBC, or Tanner Hill? Should the circumstances be appropriate for that?
The intent wasn't to exclude them, and I can update the language to include organizations as well.
That's it. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any, anything to add on this, on this item, before we look to take an action?
I just want to compliment Ms. Bazemore on her hard work on this. So, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Agreed. I love the idea of the registry of, good addition.
Okay, well, let's see, so if there's not any other comments, then it is time to take a motion, or make a motion on this item.
And just to jump in, I think we'll need separate actions, one for each item.
Right, right, I'm sorry. Right, there's the, there's the comp plan amendment, and then there's the other item. I confused me, Mr. Stoddard, maybe it's getting late.
Sure, no, the reason for two items is because the comp plan amendment is done through the usual comp plan amendment process, recommendation from Commission and resolution by council. The enabling legislation for public art policy, I'm sorry, for Arts and Culture District, the state legislation stipulates that the map has to be adopted by ordinance. So they're going through different legislative vehicles.
Right, okay.
That was a lot of shop talk. Sorry about that.
No, you're right. It's listed, right. So we had to take two separate actions. It's listed together in the same, in the same document here, but as you can see, there's the separate items. One's TR 2105, one's TO 2103.
Yes, and we had gone back and forth on that at the staff level about whether to use one staff report or two. And ultimately, because they're so interrelated, we decided on one.
Sure, but we need to make two separate actions. I completely understand. All right, so maybe we have somebody who's up to making both motions, since, you know, we'll do one, and then the next one will follow on. So, let's see, Mr. Stevens has his hand up.
Well, I've got a question. I'm just wondering, Mr. Stoddard, do we need to read all the whereas's? Or can we, can we just reference the resolution and the ordinance, the title?
I, you know, this thing is included in the, in the package. I think, I think it's fair to say I make the motion as presented in the staff report.
You're saying to include all of the whereas's?
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. I think when, I think you can, I, I don't think you have to read the thing in full. I think you can say, I moved the motion as presented in the staff report. I think that would be sufficient.
Oh, that's a much less daunting proposition. Okay, well, I'm happy to give a go to the first one, to the resolution. I move that we adopt TR 2105, Resolution to amend Chapter 3 of the City of Falls Church's Comprehensive Plan to add enriching Falls Church Public Arts Section of the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
And just to clarify, what you're moving is the motion as written, which of course is much longer?
That's correct.
Okay.
It has written and presented in the attachment to the, to the agenda for tonight's agenda, so I think correct. It's clear what we're adopting. All right, so we have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Then we'll do a roll call for Ms. Bazemore, please.
All right, Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Spice?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stevens, do you think you have it in you at this late hour to do the second half of this?
Happy to let someone else have that excitement.
All right, well.
I can work on that one. This is Mr. Puentez. I, I move the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church recommends that the City Council moves to establish the Arts and Cultural District in the location shown on the map, Arts and Cultural District, and that the map shall be located in the Comprehensive Plan's Chapter, Community Character Appearance and Design, in a section titled, Enriching Falls Church Public Arts Section of the Community Character Appearance and Design Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, as reflected in the staff report.
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Teetz. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? We'll have another roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Spice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so they both pass. And again, all the echo, good work, Ms. Bazemore, on this. And the final product turned out, turned out very, very great. Okay, moving along. Getting late, but if anyone has any brief Planning Commissioners reports they would like to share. Mr. Stevens has his hand up. So you're muted, Mr. Stevens. You're muted.
Yeah, I was just listening to the City Council's presentation or discussion on the CIP the other night. And you recall that we did put in our recommendation that the staff undertake a study on transitioning the city's fleet of vehicles to electric vehicles. And that was picked up on very nicely by Council members Hardy and the mayor, Council Mayor Tarter. So I just thought I'd share that and to suggest to Mr. Stoddard that perhaps he might want to designate somebody in the planning organization to be the point of contact for drawing together thoughts on how a study to examine how that transition might take place, could occur.
Yeah, I know the city's sort of vehicle fleet is spread over a few departments. So I think it makes sense to have somebody leading that effort. I can certainly talk internally and see who's the, who's the right person to do that.
Land Department only rides bicycles, right, Paul? So it's not, you guys are...
Well, I, you know, key fobs for Bike Share are a lot less expensive than cars.
Right, I mean, the planning department would, you know, never drives. I've never seen them driving in the city.
Yeah, I think the only reason we, we had the car was to get all the public meeting materials to the various meeting locations.
Well, that's a good, that's good to hear, Mr. Stevens. That is good to hear. All right, anybody else? I mean, the report over the last couple of weeks?
I don't have a report, but I have one quick question, if that's okay. The West Broad, the Transportation Improvement Project, was new to me. I'd never seen that before. Was I the only one, or was that new to everyone? The one that we saw earlier tonight.
The grant, but I don't know. Mr. Stoddard, how long was that percolating up?
So I, it's funny, I have to sort of go back through the, I have to sift through the sands of time. I think we submitted that application, gosh, just based on the presentation, which said that the PE funds were supposed to be available for fiscal year 2019. I got to believe it was probably a 2018 or 2017 application. One of the, I think grant funds have been a real success for the city over the last couple of years. One of, one of the hitches is that to make sure that when the funds are available, that they're used in an expeditious manner. Usually, people are applying for them five and six years out. VDOT is trying to protect itself against something which, which can commonly happen, that you apply for funds, you find out you've gotten them in the next year, and then you don't actually have staff to carry out the project. So I think the expectation is that localities are supposed to be applying five or six years out, and then staffing appropriately in the intervening time. So the, so the project, I guess it's a long way of saying that the project started, you know, at the staff level four years ago, and it's only now sort of coming out to the public at 30% design because of the time required to get the money and the staff online.
Yeah, it's great.
It's always been summarized in the CIP materials. I, I would suggest, for anyone interested in tracking projects through the CIP, not so much the CIP summary sheets, which are good descriptions of the projects and have a lot of detail, but for the transportation element specifically, there's a delivery schedule. It's a one-pager that lists out all the different projects that are moving forward and when they're going to hit different project phases, whether it's design or construction.
Okay, I think I've seen that before. Thank you. I was just, just curious if I totally missed that. So, sounds like maybe I did.
Okay. How many else?
Well, I'll just throw out that we've probably missed the mark if, if we caught the chair, the former chair of the CACT by surprise on a sidewalk project.
That's why I was so surprised, but I've just been a busy few years. And then one other, I'm doing my Planning Commissioner School the next two days, the Land Use Education Program training, so.
If you see you, of course, good.
Yep.
There we go.
Excited.
You used to have to go down to Richmond for that. Now you get to do it from your living room or wherever, but.
Yeah, I would have liked to go to Richmond. My brother lives there, could have hung out with him, gotten away from my family for a few days.
Mine was in Leesburg, so Leesburg wasn't bad.
Yeah, that'd be nice, too.
Going to do that and write our letter. I think you'd get three stars for that.
Oh, I know, I forgot I was writing the letter, too, and the, and the class. That's okay. It'll be fine.
If I remember correctly, the class wasn't as bad as the homework was.
Yeah, we'll see. So it's two days of class, and then I think it was like a three months or so. They said they're just trying not, they're trying to make the homework not onerous. I think Cory did it most recently, probably.
Oh, really?
Reported it to be not too bad.
Oh, good. I just remember, it seemed like every week I had an assignment to turn in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're doing it, they're not, it's not, it's not quite so intense. They specifically mentioned that.
Yeah, I think it only has six weeks between the two days and then the one day at the end. So maybe it was just tighter.
I'll report back.
Very good. You're going to be up to your, up to your ears in planning this week. So that's, I guess that's a good thing. Let's see, anybody else? No, it is getting late. One thing I will tell you, as, as your new chair, I will, you know me, if I can do anything I can to have us never go beyond 10:30, I will do it, because you know how I feel about meetings that, you know, run longer than they need to be. So anyhow, so moving like right along. I didn't see any director's reports attached in our agenda, Paul, so does that mean we don't have any?
Written report, but I thought I might just use a few moments to walk through upcoming agenda items. Tentatively scheduled items. Ooh, thank you. Thanks, Emily. The, so let's see, the far left column, the one with the green heading reads Planning Commission. So those are, those are items for your agenda. The other two are just to keep track of, of things you've seen as they go through the process with other groups. Let's see, so at your next, so obviously tonight was March 17th, you just had that agenda. March 7th, so like I said, this will be, that's when you're scheduled to take final action, your recommendations on the S E E Amendment, as well as the SESP, and the lot line adjustment and the land transfer, all four of those West Falls Church items. The other item that's on your agenda for that night is a work session on the Founder's Row 2 Special Exception Application. This is Catty Corner to Founder's Row, which is under construction now. So this is the southwest corner of Broad and West Streets. This was at council for a work session this Monday. And we're, this is, the reason for bringing it to the Planning Commission now, there's been no formal referral from council, but staff is, is trying to pilot a new sort of public engagement sort of sequence through a formal referral from council, that we would take, we would take an application to the Planning Commission. You all would receive a presentation, have an opportunity to discuss it, but also ask to be hosts to one member from, from each of the boards and commissions. The idea is to, the idea behind it is to engage the boards and commissions earlier in the review process for special exception applications, so that the applicant at an earlier stage has input, not only from the Planning Commission, but the rest of the boards and commissions on, on key items that they are looking for as the project design evolves. And so we're piloting it with this one. We'll see how it goes. The format for the meeting, I expect it'll be something similar to what you all did with the Broad and Washington project, the Insight project, where you all hosted one member from each of the boards and commissions, and they had an opportunity to flag key issues for their boards. If that's a success, we would look to do something similar with the Atlantic proposal, which is tentatively scheduled to go to a council work session on April 5th. And we would look for an upcoming date to do something similar. Oh, it looks like we've got it penciled in for, for April 21st. So that'll be something new, and hopefully it goes well.
Good, Paul. We will look forward to that. Maybe they can come with a better name than Founder's Row 2. I don't know. I mean, maybe, maybe that works, but we'll see.
That, we can talk about that.
I don't know if that was there, that's the development, maybe the developers, what they like to call it, but yeah, we'll see. Okay, well, we'll look forward to that in a couple of weeks. Otherwise, unless anyone else has something they want to bring up before we adjourn, I will officially call this meeting adjourned, and we'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Right.